Okay, it's 6:06. Can I get everyone in their seats? That's up first. Counselor Hickey? I'm going to call the meeting to order. Oh my God. Hello? Can I call the meeting to order, please, this evening? Thank you. Welcome to July 24th meeting of the St. John Common Council. Great night out there this evening. Welcome to all our guests who are here this evening as well. We're going to start the evening off with a land acknowledgement, and that's going right over to Counselor Hickey to read for us. Counselor Hickey, over to you, please.
Thank you, your worship. Excuse me while I pull it up here. The land on which the city of St. John or Mennequist is situated is the traditional territory of the Woolastonie. Woolastonie, along with their indigenous neighbors, the Mi'kmaq and the Pescatomacati, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s that protected their rights to lands and resources. Let us pause and reflect.
Can I ask everyone to stand for the National Anthem, please? So I'm just going to read a little statement here this evening that we've put together as a team, and it's really been put together to begin our meetings and our commitment to our constituents and to each other relating to our culture, our strategic focus, our governance, and we want to make that statement to remind everyone that I, as the chair, will be trying to organize the meeting in accordance with these commitments. Culture. We are committed to demonstrating respect for and listening to understand the perspectives and interests of other members of council, of staff, and of stakeholders. We recognize and respect the leadership role of the mayor and committee chairs. We come to meetings prepared. Tonight, we've read 770 pages of our kit, and we're ready to engage, to communicate, to listen, to promote, to trust in our dealings with each other and for council. We are committed to working well together, hard on issues, but not hard on people. We will do our work without politics or performative behavior. Our strategic focus, we will approach our work with strategic focus. Our work will be grounded in the excellence and comprehensive strategic plans that are based on broad stakeholder engagement. Our decisions will be data-based and thoughtful. We are committed to good governance and to continuous governance improvement. We will focus on fulfilling our governance roles in strategic planning and oversight, fiscal sustainability, and the effective management of risk. So, City Clerk, I will send it over to you for the first item, please.
Thank you, your worship. First item on the agenda is item 2.1, and that is for approval of the council minutes of July 10.
July 10, Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Harris on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Next is the approval of the agenda, and there are two items from Committee of the Whole that have been brought forward. The first is 17.1, recycling collection service provider, and 17.2, CMHC agreement.
I'll need a motion to approve the agenda. Counselor Stewart with the two additions, and the deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is item 4, disclosures of conflict of interest, if we have any.
Disclosures of conflict of interest. Not seeing any moving. Counselor Ogden? Do you want to put your light on? Yeah, just speak into your microphone so that we know.
For Ethels Ridge.
Okay, so that's number?
9.1, your worship.
9.1, right, okay. All right, not seeing anything else. Moving on. Next item.
Next is the consent agenda.
Deputy, over to you for consent.
Thank you, your worship. I would move 5.1 through to 5.11, please.
Take a second there, Counselor Sullivan, on the question. All in favor? Oh, sorry, I have a question. Hold on for a second here. Counselor Lowe, you had a question on the consent?
5-4, and I'll do it right now when we're ready.
Okay, 5-4 is going over to Counselor, or Ian Fogan. You're going to ask your question?
Yeah, 5-4 is what they plan to do to Tin Can Beach from Broad to the water. First of all, I'd like to know when it will start and when you feel it will be done.
Through your worship to the council, we expect the work to start within the next few weeks after the contract is awarded, and the majority of the work will be done by the end of October. There may be still some electrical work to carry over into spring of 2024.
The second question is that back in 214, we were lucky enough to get CN their line to stop so we could see Parkridge Island, see the animals out on the small island out there. So they put a stop for the line. They withdrew the track. So does a city have the right of way from Sydney, straight to Vulcan Street, to Tin Can, right to the water? Do we have the right to the water?
Correct, your worship. Through your worship to the council, we do. This is a street freeway.
So if we have the right to the water, can CN come back and re-put the line in and move it in a western direction?
CN has powers under the federal government legislative authority there. They could seek to expropriate, but we own the land, so they'd have to expropriate from us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the question is on the floor. On the question, all in favor? Oh, sorry, I got another. Never mind, I've got another. Counselor Killen.
Yeah, I think Counselor Sullivan's after me as well. So item 5.7 with the arena ice rink rate increase, I'm just wondering, it's been, this one's been ongoing for a couple of years now. Like, when are we going to see this recreation subsidization policy, and when are we going to look at the level of service we want to provide for our arenas and our fields and everything that we've been wondering about now for quite some time?
What number is this one?
5.7.
5.7? Okay, that's going over to Jen Reed. Jen, is she... Okay. Over to...
Hi, good evening. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Jen.
Okay, perfect, yes. So right now, we did have two proposals come in from consultants. And the one that we would like to proceed with, it's anticipated that we're gonna start mid-August and come back to council probably around February, around the same time that we would need to to have the rates approved for spring field time. So that's the anticipated timeline we're looking at to have these review completed.
Okay, okay, thanks. Counselor Sullivan, over to you.
Thanks, your worship. Just a quick note on 5.3, the increase of the contract at Fundy Key Harbor Passage Extension. As I understand it, your worship and council, while there's an increase in the award of contract, it still falls within the budget of the item, so don't panic. It's budgeted, we're good.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Harris?
Yeah, I'm just curious on this one. Shouldn't we wait for the consultancy report to come back on the subsidization policy? I know that council did shoot down a rate increase. A couple of years ago, there was a motion to review the subsidization policy. If we've got one coming, is there any urgency on getting the arena rates increased now where we may be, as a decision-making body, in a position to make a better decision about things after that?
Jen, are you still with us?
Yes, through your worship to the counselor. So we normally send out our arena ice applications. The deadline is August, normally the first Friday in August. So this is about the time when we come to council for an approval for rates. Kind of the same as we did for the field rates. We are just looking for a 3% increase to try to offset some of the operational costs. And then, you know, hopefully, once that is approved and we start kind of the consultation with consultant for the rec policy, we'll come back with kind of a better understanding and a clearer path for the policy come February.
Yeah, because I'm not interested in continuing to kick this one down the road anymore. We've already, as a body, said no to this on other fronts, other fields, and other initiatives when it comes to recreation. So I think we really need to get this done if we're gonna be able to go coherently into the future. Because we're saying we're gonna increase the rates of... I get it, it's a small amount, but it's still an amount that we're increasing after we've just paused them and frozen them on other things. So there's not a lot of alignment here to what we're doing. Anyway, just to put the urgency on there that we really need to get this done because it's a mixed signal we're sending to the recreation community in the city right now.
Counselor Redwan, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick comment. I just wanted to draw the public's attention to 5.4. This project looks really great. Narrowing of roads, pedestrian access ramps, new sidewalks, landscaping, putting more trees is gonna beautify the area, slow the traffic down, and help with flood mitigation. So hats off. And whenever we can do a road like this, we really need to try if the money is there.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Ogden, over to you.
Yes, when we're talking about rates, one thing I'd like the Recreation Parks Department to do, and I was chair of it for 15 years, is to look at alternate ways to deliver unstructured play. In the wintertime, a lot of kids are at home. They might be playing basketball. Not everybody likes to play basketball. But there are kids who wanna play in arenas. And we have top-corner hockey, which is a huge success story, where children who do not have parents, gear, transportation, and this group of volunteers headed by Chris Green and Paul McDavid, et cetera, and they're getting kids in the ice surface. But I've asked them, they said they could double their numbers tomorrow, but getting the ice time, paying for it, getting the kids to the rinks. So one thing I would like to see, because of global warming, is I'd like to see artificial ice surfaces on the outside, much like we're building at Market Square. Quisbamsis and Rossa each have one, with perhaps a roof on top where you don't need coaches, you know, to be on the ice, you could have parents there. But you don't need structure, and you don't need the cost of the city. The capital costs are all upfront in our vulnerable neighborhoods where children do not have the support of adults but still get exercise in the wintertime. And in the summertime, it could be used for ball hockey, which is growing. So I'd like Department of Parks and Recreation to look at, can we build some small outdoor rinks, much the same as when we build small soccer fields or playgrounds so that you can have unstructured play so that children are not sitting inside? And it's one of the ways to defeat poverty is to get kids healthy physically and mentally. So I would like them to look at that. We built an outdoor rink after the Memorial Cup by Harbor Station. It's not artificial. I built my son's rink for 25 years, and I went from five months to four weeks because of global warming. So I would like to look at some small, artificial, where the city's cost of maintenance is very low, and it goes back to the community. And if they could look at that, because the whole goal here, what we're talking about, is just getting children active.
Thank you, counselor. Okay, I have no more comments or questions on the consent agenda, so I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. So for the next item, let's skip from members' comments and try to get one of our presentations in. Operations Feed St. John's. City Clerk, over to you for an intro.
Yes, thank you, your worship. So next, we have a presenter under Operation Feed St. John, and we have Derek May, I believe that's...
I'm Patrick Gordon.
That's Derek May. Okay.
Max, oh, Pat Gordon?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Gordon, welcome.
Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Patrick Gordon. For those of you that don't know who I am, and I'm a retired sergeant of the Canadian Armed Forces. When I came home to my city, I realized that there was two things happening. One, there was a ridiculous amount of poverty. And two, we had nowhere to support veterans and first responders in our community outside of the Legion, which offers a place to get drunk and gamble. Majority of us come home with physical and mental disorders, and promoting a place to get drunk and gamble is not conducive to healing. So when I came home, I was really banged up. I did three tours of Afghanistan, and I didn't know even where to start when I got medically discharged from the Canadian Armed Forces. I apologize, I'm a little nervous and anxious. I recognized that as well, and I struggled a lot. We got hit with a pandemic, and then I realized how bad our communities were. I was disconnected from St. John because of my injuries. A lot of times, a lot of us, when we come home, we just reside into our basements, into our garages. And it becomes an issue because you're not healing, and the greatest part of healing is community. And when you're in the Canadian Armed Forces, or you're a police officer, or you're a firefighter, or nurse, in your occupation, you have that community. You have those comrades, you have those brothers and sisters. And when you suffer an injury, which our first responders are having a ridiculous hard time in our community right now because of the pandemic, because of the shortages in officers, because a lot of people right now don't wanna wear a uniform. And so that's putting a lot of the workload on our first responders. So I recognize that as well. And the Legion opened up to the first responders in the early 90s, but none of them go because it was never created initially for them. We need to take a pause. I feel like everyone's paying attention over there and not to me. No? Okay. I also recognize our city, it's falling apart, okay? The fact of the matter is, food banks don't work, okay? You're expecting people at the very bottom of the income ladder to get on a bus, get in a cab, and spend what money they have, go stand in line shamefully, get a couple boxes of Kraft dinner, and go home. It's not working. What we're doing is, is we're coordinating with schools. We're taking food directly to the issues, directly where it's gonna have the biggest impact, and that is children, okay? Kids cannot learn if they're going to school with hungry bellies, period, okay? And what is happening in the schools? A lot of the staff are buying granola bars, apples, and whatnot because there's no funding for it. And the poverty, it's growing. When I first started this organization in 2021, we were just doing the five high priority schools in the Uptown region. We've now expanded to the east side of St. John because of the modernization of our Uptown region. Rent is now, it's not affordable for a lot of these individuals, so they're moving towards bus routes and stuff of that nature. I took 50 bags of food to Glen Falls in May, and they had to do a draw. There's 118 families, kids that go to that school, and they had to do a draw to see who would get the bags of food. Now, each bag of our food has 50-plus meals in it, okay? So we're not just handing off a couple boxes, like I said, to Kraft dinner. We're actually giving enough food that a family of four can help get them to their next subsidized check, and we make sure we get it to them around the middle of the month. And we're having tons of success. And we're also now, when I first started this, I was by myself. And now I have, as you can see, Operation Feed. We have 15 veterans and first responders that work with the organization. And every one of us are doing this for free. We get up every morning, and we serve our country. And now we wanna serve our community because we are recognizing issues, and they're not being solved, period. And what we're doing is we're taking action, okay? A lot of us in the military, you know, we're like an old family with a TV with no remote. If you want change, you gotta get up and do it. And that's what we're doing right now. And we would really like your support. We have had an immense amount of support from the Valley, but I haven't heard my name come out of St. John once. And the name of my organization, excuse me, organization, is Operation Feed St. John. Our goal is to create a wellness center withinside the greater St. John area. It will have a gym, a peer support, a rec area, and we're looking between $50 and $75 a month membership fee. That membership fee will be 100% back into the community and be our sustainable piece for Operation Feed. I personally, as the CEO and founder, I don't take a dollar. I don't take gas money. The stickers on my truck were donated. My time is donated. Everything we do is donated because we know that it needs to get done. And the vast majority of us from the Canadian Armed Forces know that's what we do. We get stuff done. And we're notorious for getting things done with less. So we would really, really appreciate your support moving forward. We're gonna continue doing what we do no matter what, but eventually, our city's gonna get way worse. Those two new beautiful cranes that everybody wants to dance around and say, well, guess what, with the long, comes the dark side of that. Nobody wants to talk about the drugs and the human trafficking, okay? Pay attention to the RCMP website. There's children missing every single day during the pandemic. Nothing's being done. And if we're not, right now, if we don't take the time to really look at these issues and solve them, our city's gonna turn into Gotham. But we're not gonna have no Batman coming to save us. I can promise you that right now. Thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen. If you have any questions?
Yes, well, hold on there for a second, Mr. Gordon, because I think we will have a couple of questions. I wanna say myself that I appreciate you coming this evening, you and your team. You bring a lot of issues forward. When I read the item in the kit, I love that synergy between the kids that need food and the team that needs and wants to help. And so it's a wonderful marriage there, so...
Food is just the beginning. Can you imagine, you know, being mentored, young troubled youth with veterans and first responders? You know, that's our plan too as well. I got paired up with KVPD and helped them knock out some community service for a young fellow that got himself into trouble. And then I had St. John, the Justice Department, contact me to do the same thing. Unfortunately, I had to decline because I don't have the support of the city. So we're growing and being asked of things of us, but unfortunately, I can't support it because I don't have the support.
Right. And we had, tonight in our audience, we have the mayor of Quisbamsis, Libby O'Hara.
No, I see her. We've had multiple conversations. She's great. She's wonderful. So we are right now currently knocking out all three of our major, I guess, points. We have a peer support running at KV Psychology and Lurgations, one in the Valley, one in St. John, every Wednesday from 6:00 to 8:00. We have our gym memberships at Afterburn Performance Center. They are giving us $50. Anyone who's involved with Operation Feed gets a $50 a month membership fee at Afterburn, which is amazing. You know, we can get cheap beer anywhere in this country, but we can't get a cheap gym membership as veterans? Something wrong with that. So, and our peer support, our rec area. Yeah, so we're kinda outsourcing right now, and our food program runs out of the basement of King's Church in the Valley.
All right, I do have a few questions or comments for you from my team.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Harris, over to you first.
Thank you, your worship. Thanks for the presentation. Obviously, you can appreciate, you know, a lot of the dumping ground for regional problems and regional struggles around poverty end up right here in our city. And there are a lot of people who have devoted their entire lives here to trying to be on that front line, be neighbors to people who are in times, who are in issues. And we've had a lot of well-intentioned people come through this city that don't have the, don't have the right tools, if you will, to be able to take that to the end goal, right? Lot of people have tried to start initiatives in this city and get them through two or three years, four or five years. They get a little bit of funding, and then it falls apart because it just didn't have the right tools in the toolbox to get it through to the finish line. And in my experience, that comes down to a little bit of governance. That comes down boring as heck, for sure, but it comes down to who's gonna continue the trajectory of this organization and these efforts. So that's my question is, what's the governance look like for what you guys do? You know, I've been on the front lines as well in community development in the city, and I don't think we've ever crossed paths. That doesn't mean anything. I just don't understand how you guys operate, or, you know, is there a board model? Is there a funding model behind this that's gonna mean if this council gives a support or a nod that we can ensure someone's gonna see the job done over the long term? Because poverty is a 20-, 30-year cycle problem to solve.
It's a generational problem.
Yeah.
And in the city, it hits deep into generations, okay? Unfortunately, you know, we have a mental health issue in our city that's disguised as a drug addiction. Really, at the end of the day, we need more counselors in the community helping these men and women, right? You know, kids don't decide where mom and dad, where they're born, or whether mom and dad have a drug dependency or an alcohol dependency. But that, we're kinda getting off the thing here. Governance, yes. I have a board of directors right now. We're currently working with a company out of Victoria called Landmark. An individual who I served with is the board of directors in that particular organization, and he is helping us build a proper board right now. I have three individuals. But, you know, I do recognize what you just said because, yeah, not-for-profits arise and fall every day, and it's usually based off an individual and their passion. But once that passion burns out, then, you know, they fall. So we're currently working on a strategy to implement a proper governance that it will be governed by individuals like myself, veterans, first responders, community leaders. And then it never becomes a moneymaker for anything other than the community.
Sure.
So we're currently working on that.
No, that's great. I mean, I think that's the right model, what you're doing.
Absolutely. No, I don't want this to be someone to put money in their pockets. As for our funding right now, we hustle until we become sustainable, which is our wellness center. So we do events around the city, which I, you know, we were in the Christmas parade, so I don't know how you didn't see us.
Thank you. Counselor Ogden, over to you.
Patrick, I'd like to thank you for inspiring us tonight because we need that right now.
Thank you.
And people, especially children, need the support of other people. And that comes from the community, and building community is so important. One thing you can help us with is that St. John has the highest child poverty rate in the country.
Yes, it does.
And we have an industrial tax, for instance, that we only get a pittance of. And Moncton and Fredericton don't have industry, so it's not a concern for the rest of the province. But the province takes a lot of money out of St. John.
They should have Fredericton, and they give us a third ballot.
Yeah, so this has gone on for 60 years, and this has been accumulation and helped encourage the growth of poverty in St. John. It doesn't make any sense. We should be their wealthiest city with the amount of taxes that are generated here, but we don't get to keep them. We don't get to keep our university money that comes back to us through a president in Fredericton. We're the only city in Atlantic...
I'm gonna help you with that.
...in Canada that has to deal with a president in another city. But also, we lost 5,000 federal jobs, seven departments, plus the dry dock. So if you can help us with getting the notice of the federal government of what we've lost, getting the notice of the provincial government, I think our poverty, because it's the amount of wealth that was taken out of this city over the last 60 years, last 25 years federally. So anything we can do to help you, which is, you know, people on the ground, let us know what we can do. But I wanna thank you for inspiring us and for helping build community. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. But yeah, absolutely, I can, I'll do my best, and, you know, squeaky wheel gets the grease.
Counselor Hickey.
Thanks very much, your worship. Thanks, Pat, and of course, thanks to Derek and your team for being here as well. It's, you know, I represent a ward with 50% child poverty, and it's really hard to watch the dynamics in your neighborhood change. And I think over the last few years, we've seen them change before our eyes.
We didn't have tents everywhere in our city three years ago. We do now.
Yeah, and I think, and I think you're seeing that change. We're well over 250 people homeless in our community every night. And it's real, sometimes, sometimes, sitting in this chair, you feel a little helpless, not being able to do anything, you know, specific to whether it be any of these mental health care crises, housing crises, things like that. So thanks for what you're doing, and hopefully, we'll be able to, whether it's through community grants or through, uh, any of our other programs.
Well, you guys can also help with bylaws as well, too. Our police officers are decimated right now. You know, they're, they're, they just had a closed-door vote. Ninety-eight percent voted to have the chief removed because it's such a toxic work environment, okay? The minimum manning for police officers at night is twelve, and they're operating with four in our city, four. That's not safe. And I know you know this because I can tell by the way you're looking at me right now. Don't say that, Patrick. Don't say that. Well, our population deserve to know. Okay, these men and women keep us safe at night, and we're not supporting them. If a police officer goes in with a diagnosis of post-traumatic stress disorder, they take his gun from him and they send him home. Right? I have post-traumatic stress disorder. I don't want to hurt anybody. I want to help people.
Exactly, exactly.
So I think, I think honestly, you need to sit down and start looking at some bylaws and how you can help make these officers' lives a little better. Maybe some aggressive panhandling bylaws or squatting ones. Like, they can't even take some of these men and women that are just making their way with the city, and they can't even deal with them. Right? Because their hands are tied as well. So then when you have an officer who can't do his job, he becomes frustrated. Then he doesn't want to be a part of the job anymore, right? Then you start ticking away at their overall well-being, right?
Okay, so can I move on then with, to Counselor Redwan?
Thank you, Mayor and Sergeant. Thank you for your service.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
One of the best things I've, I've seen since I've been sitting in this room and before I got here, I sat over there for nine years, was you saluting the anthem, by the way, just food for thought. I just wanted to ask you though, as a question, um, what, if the public wants to get involved and the public wants to help, what can they do? How can they reach out to you?
So we have a, a website. I started a subscription on, uh, our, our website. Uh, it's ten dollars and twenty-five dollars and fifty dollars. It's a recurring, I called it Operation Feed Special Forces. You get a nice little letter in the mail, dog tags, a sticker that goes on the back of your car so you feel like you're a part of the organization. And then every fifty dollars you give us, you feed a family. So then you're actually being a part of your community change because everybody wants to help. But a lot of people just don't know how to, and they don't know where it's going to be the most effective. You know, when you give a dollar to the United Way, maybe ten cents of that dollar makes it to the cause. When you give us a dollar, one hundred percent of the dollar goes to where it needs to go.
Are you needing volunteers as well?
We are at the moment, yeah. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna try to keep it, you know, we have, Atlantic Canada has the highest number of veterans in all of Canada, okay? Five point nine percent of our population are veterans, and the next highest place is Ontario, and that's two point two. In the southern New Brunswick area, we have something like four thousand veterans. In the Ormachtou area, there's thirty thousand. So that alone right there, if we establish our healing center, will fuel, not to mention all the municipalities and the first responders that will want to access this as well. So I firmly believe if we can build this facility here, and no one else in Canada is doing this, this is a grassroots thing that's not happening anywhere else. And I'm telling you right now, when we're done doing what we're going to do, people are going to write books about this because I'm not stopping because I love this city and I hate what's happening in it. And so do these men and women. Every one of them served their country, and now they're serving their community. They don't have to do this. We're all pensioned off and might add you quite nice ones. What we're doing is because it needs to happen. And if we don't do it, honestly, I don't think it's going to happen.
I appreciate your passion, Sergeant. Just to kind of point out, Counselor Stewart, myself, are award for counselors, which includes Glenfall School, and thank you for your work over there.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Well, that's it, and thank you for being here this evening. And we love to hear your passion, and there's a lot of it there, and for you and your team.
Appreciate it.
The city will be in touch to make sure that you have my contact information as well, Mr. Gordon. But, uh, just want to say, really appreciate you being here. You've brought some great things to light for us. And just to have you here, and you're on a great, here on a great night because you have a full house here as well. You can hear your message.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the time to allow me to speak tonight. But in all honesty, I hope it doesn't fall on deaf ears because we really, we do need to take some action in our community sooner than later.
We agree.
Thank you so much.
Okay, City Clerk, next item. Yes, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. Uh, so next on the agenda, we are after, slightly after six-thirty for our scheduled public hearing. So item nine point one on your agenda is a public hearing. It's for a proposed section fifty-nine condition with a planning advisory committee recommendation and a staff presentation for lands adjacent to twenty-one hundred Sandy Point Road.
Okay, so I'm handing this over to Commissioner, Commissioner Jaclyn over there for Hamilton, for the introduction, please.
Yes, good evening, Your Worship, members of council. Uh, before you this evening for public hearing is an application which was submitted by Scott Wallace for a section fifty-nine amendment for a property located on lands adjacent to twenty-one hundred Sandy Point Road. Uh, the application is seeking, uh, to amend the section fifty-nine conditions which were originally approved by council in two thousand and one to reflect design changes, uh, to the Ethos Ridge Retirement Facility and also the timeline for completion of the development project. For council's awareness, the scope of the application being considered tonight is, uh, limited to the proposed changes to the planning conditions and not the broader question of the appropriateness of the land use or zoning, which was a decision, in fact, made by council as part of the previous plan amendment and rezoning process, uh, approved in two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, the application has been evaluated by staff and the planning advisory committee. And before you, our recommendations to approve the application with two amended conditions from planning advisory committee. And I would note that you have included in your package a supplemental report from staff on the PAC recommendations, uh, which staff will address in tonight's presentation. And with that as an introduction, I am pleased to introduce, uh, Mark Reed, senior planner from our community planning team to deliver the presentation tonight on behalf of staff.
Mr. Reed, over to you when you're ready.
Thank you, Your Worship and Jaclyn. Spare with me here till I get this up on the screen. Uh, the application before you this evening, as Jaclyn mentioned, is a section fifty-nine amendment for the, uh, Ethos Ridge, Ridge Project adjacent to twenty-one hundred Sandy Point Road. Uh, the applicant is seeking to amend the section fifty-nine conditions imposed on the two thousand and twenty-one rezoning, uh, to incorporate a revised, uh, site layout and development plan, uh, that replaces the underground parking with surface parking. Uh, they are also seeking an increase to the unit count from a hundred and thirty-three units to a maximum of a hundred and sixty-seven. And, uh, they're also seeking an extension on the time limit for completion of, of the development from five years to seven years. Uh, although not a specific element of the section fifty-nine conditions, the applicant is also, you know, they are seeking an, an increase to, uh, the number of units in the development. Um, and also, the, uh, proposal did receive approval in two thousand and twenty-one for the municipal plan amendment and rezoning. And as Jaclyn said, uh, tonight's application just deals with the specific conditions that were imposed on that development. Uh, in terms of the previous proposal, it's shown here on the screen. Uh, as approved, they had a large building, uh, towards the rear of the site, uh, close to the river, uh, with a podium and then two, uh, two smaller towers. Uh, so the residential component would be in two sections. Uh, the revised concept, uh, what they've done is they've done some additional geotechnical evaluation and project costing, and they've removed the underground parking and the pool. Uh, it is still a, uh, development that is focused on seniors and meets the develop, meets the definition of a supportive facility. The revised concept is shown here. It's a different building, uh, essentially an S-shaped. Uh, the building has been designed to, uh, preserve the views towards the river while eliminating a lot of the views that were present in the previous design that overlooked the, uh, adjacent dwelling units onto Pelton Road. Uh, this is a comparison here showing the two concepts. Uh, the previous concept shown in red, uh, with the two wings of the building and then the existing concept, uh, shown in the black. Uh, the revised concept, they would have the, um, upper floors would be comprised of seniors dwelling units, and, uh, the lower floor would include the amenity spaces and the dining area, as well of back-of-house facilities and, uh, a few residential, uh, seniors units. The, uh, proposal was also revised. It's a interesting roofline that incorporates, uh, basically a brown material and cladding. Uh, it's five stories in height, so there is an additional story added, although it, uh, is slightly over the height guidelines. Uh, it is not out of context for the, uh, surrounding area. Uh, this is a rendering here from the parking area showing the proposed, uh, rendering and cladding materials. Uh, the site itself, it's an eight point five hectare site accessed off of Sandy Point Road. Uh, it also has frontage on Pelton Road, but there will be no access, uh, from Pelton. Uh, there is a clause in there that limits the access from Pelton to, uh, uses associated with the servicing of the electrical, electrical transformer and potentially a lift station. Uh, the view from Sandy Point Road, it's, uh, an undeveloped tree site towards the back, uh, grasslands and successional growth at the front. Uh, this is a view looking into the site from the end of Pelton Road. Uh, there's a row of trees there. These would be preserved as there would be, uh, no day-to-day access from Pelton Road. Uh, this is a view looking along the property line that is shared between the adjacent Pelton Road properties and the development site. Uh, and then another view here, uh, from the site looking towards Pelton Road. Uh, the municipal plan has the site designated as major community facility. Uh, the suitability of the site for development was established with the previous application in two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, the proposed design still integrates the site well with the topography and natural features of the site. Uh, there's a tree buffer area. Uh, the building is located behind the ridge, which, uh, shields quite a bit of the view from Sandy Point Road and also has a site coverage of four percent, uh, well below the fifty percent in the underlying major community facility zone. Uh, it represents an infill of a vacant site between two developed residential areas and provides housing for seniors, which, which is a growing segment of the population. Uh, staff are of the opinion the proposal still conforms to the city's municipal plan. The site was rezoned to major community facility in two thousand and twenty-one. It generally meets the standards of the zone, uh, except for the maximum front yard setback. Given the intent of the design of the site, it's set back quite a ways, uh, from the development, or from Sandy Point Road, rather. Uh, that minimum or that maximum front yard setback is more of an urban standard that you would see in the, uh, uptown core of the city. Uh, there is a slight height variance required. Uh, the building tops out at, uh, twenty-five meters based on the rating plan that was submitted with the application, uh, compared with the maximum permitted height of twenty-four. Uh, that height variance can be accommodated by a staff-level variance. Uh, the development is still considered a supportive facility major, which is, is an establishment devoted to retired residents where common amenities and services, including communal dining, are provided exclusively to such senior residents. In terms of the amendments to the conditions that are being sought, uh, the first one is a revised site layout that, uh, brings the surface parking, brings parking to the surface as opposed to underground. Uh, they show a hundred and twenty-two stalls in the concept, which is sufficient for between two hundred and ten and two hundred and fifty residents, uh, conformance with the plan submitted with the section fifty-nine amendment application. Uh, we are still recommending that that be retained as a condition to tie the future development to what is presented with the current application. Uh, staff also recommend an additional condition be imposed to, uh, provide for tree retention between the proposed parking area and the dwellings on Pelton Road. Uh, the applicant is also seeking an extension to the development timeline or sunset clause. Uh, in the intervening time since the two thousand and twenty-one approval, they've been progressing with design work and costing refinements that have resulted in changes to respond to costs and, uh, site conditions, namely the underlying bedrock. Uh, in staff's opinion, the developer has been diligent in advancing the project, and staff recommended increase to the timeline for completion to seven years. With respect to the increase in the number of seniors units, uh, a unit cap was not included explicitly in the existing conditions. Uh, however, staff are recommending a condition with a specific unit cap to a maximum of a hundred and sixty-seven units. Uh, and we also recommend an additional section fifty-nine condition, uh, requiring an additional traffic study and agreement to cover any improvements coming out of that traffic study. Uh, a lot of the existing approvals remain in effect. Uh, access to the site will be limited to Sandy Point Road. Uh, no vehicular access from Pelton Road aside from access to the lift station and transformer if it is required, and the use will be limited to a supportive facility major. Uh, the existing section fifty-nine and one thirty-one agreements that were entered into in two thousand and twenty-one still remain in, in effect. Uh, those cover the infrastructure extensions and connections for adjacent residents, uh, public access to the private trails on-site, traffic calming at the Foster-Thurston Sandy Point Road intersection, the onsite pedestrian walkway, uh, between the site and West Mount Boulevard, and provision of an expert opinion with respect to groundwater recharge impacts. In terms of the engagement, uh, we sent letters to landowners within a hundred meters of the subject site, and notice of tonight's public hearing was advertised on the city's website. Uh, the proponent did hold some virtual public engagement at a neighborhood meeting in May of two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, at the PAC meeting earlier this month, uh, the proponent spoke in favor of the proposal. Uh, six area landowners spoke in opposition with, uh, issues focused on traffic and transit, stormwater management from the parking area, environmental impacts, and conformance with the supportive facility definition. Uh, as of late last week, eight letters were received from area residents, and there are a few more in tonight's council packet. Staff's recommendation is to amend, uh, the end adopting the new conditions, uh, referencing the new site plan that incorporates surface parking. Uh, there's the additional condition with respect to tree retention between the parking area and the adjacent properties along Pelton Road. Uh, we're proposing a cap of a hundred and sixty-seven units, as well as a new condition, uh, that has a parking drop-off area and sidewalk in the main parking lot to revive for better pedestrian connectivity between the parking area and the building. Uh, we're recommending extension of the completion timeline to seven years and a new section fifty-nine agreement for an updated traffic study. All of the other conditions remain as is. Uh, at the PAC meeting, uh, they adopted the staff recommendation with two amendments. One was an additional section fifty-nine condition from the committee, uh, seeking to limit the parking lot to a maximum of a hundred and twenty-two parking spaces. Uh, staff have provided a supplemental report recommending this not be adopted. Uh, we note that there are additional, there are existing controls, uh, with respect to the stormwater management of the parking lot, should it be expanded, and the impacts, uh, which require the developer to go through the development permit process and also complete an updated stormwater study to, uh, demonstrate how runoff from the site will be managed from any increase in the parking area. Uh, there was also an amendment regarding the additional traffic study. Staff are supportive of that, and, uh, it has also been amended to recommend that the scope of the study be determined in consultation with city staff. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. So I will open the public hearing. And what I'll do is I'm going to ask if, for anyone who would like to speak against the application for the change in the fifty-nine, uh, agreements there, the fifty-nine, approvals. And I will ask, uh, if you are coming up to speak, if you would give us your name and your approximate address. I don't need your exact address, but what we're looking for is how this, uh, this development is going to impact you. And if you, if your neighbor or someone else has already said it, if you want to come up and just say, listen, I agree with my neighbor or whatever, we're happy to hear that as well going forward. So I'm going to call first for anyone who would like to speak against the application. Come forward, and I'll get you for the record to give us your name.
Good evening. My name is Jill Jollino. I live at three hundred and sixty Pelton Road. I trust that you have received my letter containing my questions and comments regarding the amendments to section fifty-nine of Ethos Ridge proposal and that you've carefully considered the concerns of the residents of the Sandy Point community. So to recap, the changes of section fifty-nine are significant in both structure and in process. A two-building complex connected by an atrium is to become one very large building with an increase in the number of apartments from one twenty-five, see April two thousand and twenty-one council meeting, to one sixty-seven, a thirty-three point six percent increase and an additional story on the building. Number two, there will be no underground parking, no pool, no communal dining space, no support staff. Number three, a retail space is included for a possible cafe, bar, and amenity rooms for therapists.[1661.29] Commercial tenants will be required to provide these services. A large outdoor parking lot estimated at 122 spaces to accommodate a 167-unit apartment building plus staff plus visitors. Number five, the concept of 75-plus aging active seniors' residents has been changed to retired persons, which would have no age parameters. Number six, the sunset clause would be extended to add five years, yet there is no financing in place and thereby no start date can be explicitly defined. Number seven, city transit has been discontinued to the Sandy Point area, and yet public transit is a requirement of Section F of LU 90 for a supportive facility. A shuttle service has only been stated as a possibility. By any definition, this is an apartment building, not a supportive facility. The current zoning does not support an apartment building. Aging in place, independent living, choice of services are concepts that have been developed to support those requiring specific assistance to remain in their family home, whether it be an apartment or a single-family dwelling. A supportive facility moves the person requiring these services into a complex that provides the services. A support, all of the spin and marketing will not change the fact that this is an apartment building as any other where you can obtain services either through purchase or through social development programs. In closing, I will once again, once again, address the issue of traffic. Motor vehicle bylaws of the city do not protect the residents of Pelton Road from construction traffic and traffic resulting from the imposition of a multi-unit apartment building at the dead end. If you go ahead with this precedent-setting manipulation of the zoning, then a specific amendment to ban all Ethos Ridge traffic before, during, and after construction from Pelton Road must be specifically added to the amendment. Thank you for my.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak against the application?
Your worship, my name is Corey Kinsella, and I'm a resident of Pelton Road, specifically 305. 305 Pelton Road sits in the corner of Sandy Point and Pelton. Through my property, there's a city catch basin. It actually, all the water from the hill, anything that comes from Sandy Point Road, scenic view, all comes down through my backyard, under my ground, or under, under my lawn, I guess, through a city-installed culvert. There was a catch basin sign up till about, I don't know, two months ago, and somebody from the city, I know it was a city vehicle, showed up and removed my sign. Apparently, it's not on the city map, but I just find it odd with this new development and things that are happening. The city claims that they don't know it even exists, but a city truck removed my catch basin sign. So my concern is with the amount of tarmac that's being put up on that hill. If we back up a bit and go to Fieldstone Terrace, when Fieldstone Terrace was being built, they scraped off all the trees, all the vegetation, everything was there. They rock broke for weeks. You know what happens? My house floods. That's up at the Chairbrook Zoo. All that groundwater come down, scenic view, Sandy Point, ended up in my area. $18,000 it cost me, out of pocket, not insurance, out of pocket, to fix, repair, and install some kind of water mitigation program in my basement. So again, with our ditches, 17 years I've been there, 17 years I've paid taxes, 17 years I've asked the city to come and clean out my ditches. Take a look at the catch basin, look at the culvert, find out what we can do. You're on the list. You're on the list. I spoke with Mr. McKenzie. I spoke with Mr. Sullivan when this came up in '21. These were all issues. They haven't gone away. They haven't gotten any better. So at the end of the day, with that tarmac and the proposed project that's going up there, what happens with all that groundwater and where does it go? So it says, yeah, that's going to be dealt with through the process of peremptory and so on and so forth. That's fantastic. When that's done and it doesn't work, who's responsible? Is it me? Because at the end of the day, three, four, five floods later, no support from the city, we pay taxes, we pay deer taxes where we're at. There's no mitigation. So at the end of the day, I'm left to my own. So between my wife and I, family, kids, whatever, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place. The developers stated they want to work with the community. We need the community's support. In '21, when we had this project and we originally went against it, the developer or one of his members of his development team committed that they'd come over and take a look. I'd yet to see anybody there. And that's when it was a seniors' complex. Now it's an apartment building. No underground parking and way more asphalt. My question is, where's the water going to go and who's protecting me? How am I going to get like any, I don't know, any satisfaction or guarantee that we're not going to flood? Because if it is the case and we do have water, I'm to the point now, yes, $18,000 when Fieldstone Terrace been in. I think collectively, we have about $30,000 into the basement with two internal drain tile systems, sump pits, everything else. We cannot stop it. So at the end of the day, witness does happen, we might as well just border up and build a boat because, you know, we're, we're in a real bad situation. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Kinsella. And what will happen with this is that when, after, when I call for who's in favor of the project, we'll have an opportunity, this team, to ask the developer and also to ask, there will be questions for staff at the end. So some of the questions will come from the, from this session right now, from the public session.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Counselor.
Okay, I'll call, ask again if there's anyone here who'd like to come forward and give us your name for the record and your address, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. My name is Robert Bazaluck. I live at 433 Pelton Avenue.
Excuse me, what did you say your last name was? Sorry, Robert.
Pardon?
What was your last name?
Bazaluck, B-A-Z-A-L-U-K. First of all, I'd like to thank the council members that took the time to at least acknowledge that I sent them an email. I know you're busy. I know we don't have time to read them all, but at least a thank you for sending it. I am a taxpayer and at least acknowledging it would have been kind of nice. To start with, I'm one of the properties that's directly behind this new one-acre parking lot that's going in. The parking lot will be exactly 21 meters, I've gone out and checked it, to a ravine, which runs through the back of my property, which floods me out. In 2014 and 2015, the city came and had to replace the front of the driveway in the house that I'm living in. I didn't own it at that time. Water comes down the driveway, washes it out, takes out the ditch. This is going to continue. What I had to do two years ago is spend $16,000 and put additional drainage down the side of my property to handle this runoff. My backyard is still a swamp. This water is going to pour off the asphalt and pour into my backyard, and there's nothing I can do about it. My property value will decrease. Hopefully, my taxes will too. We'll have to see about that. But to get back where we were going, in 2021, this came to council, and I have nothing against development. This city needs good development, but this is not a good development. It's in the wrong location. This is not what was passed in 2021. It is no longer a senior complex. On May the 10th, Ethos had a presentation for the neighbors. We watched it, and they, their exact words were, "We are now focusing on active seniors and active adults." It's no longer an assisted living facility. This is an apartment building that's gone from 125 suites to 167, a 33% increase. Approximately, according to Scott Walton, there will be 220 to 225 residents living there. We in our area only have 134 houses. You're doubling our population. We are seven kilometers away from the closest gas station or grocery store, which means with no bus, the only way people can get shopping is a car. They've limited it to 122 stalls for 225 people. Does not make sense. Where are these extra cars going to park? Obviously, on Pelton Avenue, and I'm going to have a field day calling the police and having them towed every day they dare because we cannot continue to have our community destroyed. I found some interesting things online. One was a report done in 2021 about city council reviews, reveals 23 priorities for the next four years. I thought it was interesting that they say they're having a green commitment to environmental stewardship, including protection of the environment and reducing greenhouse gases. This area has environmentally sensitive areas. There are endangered species in this area. And what's going to happen? We're going to put a blacktop, one-acre parking lot by the road all the way up. That's not going to be city property, so who's going to plow it? I imagine Scott's going to have to have somebody come in and plow it every year because the snow builds up and they're really quick. You're expecting people to come from Ontario, which is what they're hoping, not retired people to come here and live, so they can go and go to a restaurant, a cafe, which will hold approximately 20 people. This is supposedly communal for 250-odd people, plus a licensed bar. It must be nice if they can afford to have a licensed bar and a cafe where they can eat, but I'm not sure they're going to want to go out every morning and scrape their windshields and scrape the snow off their cars. The underground parking was the way to go on this. They say they're going to put lighting up. That's fine. Directional lighting is good until it snows. The type of lighting they're going to use reflects off the snow, and it's going to make my backyard a movie set. With the property, as they've said, they've moved it further back from our location, from our property lines, but the parking lot has been extended closer to our property lines. Doesn't make sense. A 36, a 33% increase in units, underground parking lot being removed for cost savings. Okay, I can see cost savings. It's hard for developers to get things done. Is there going to be any social housing? This is something St. John pushes for, social housing. If this is an apartment building, why is there no social housing? He's not going to get funding from CMHC without it. Who else is going to give him $55 million to build this? This was passed two years ago, and council stated they were looking forward to having a building that would employ 50 employees when it's finished. It's now employing less than five. How is that helping the city? It no longer meets the criteria of zoning. There's no transit. There's no communal dining. There's no amenities. They say that all the units will have kitchens. They'll all have laundries. Okay, that is going to increase the amount of discharge from that building. I understand the city is building a new waste station down on, off Kennebec Cases Drive. Still not finished yet. Social housing needs to go into this building if this building is going to be completed. Personally, I don't think it's going to be completed. I don't think they have the funding, but that's my opinion. They're asking now for seven years instead of five. They've already wasted two. They've done nothing. When this passed in 2021, some of the criteria given was rumble strips on Foster Thurston and on Sandy Point. Great, they're done, but the city paid for them. Scott Walton didn't. Four-way stops at Sandy Point and Kennebec Cases Drive. Not done. What's going on? Now there are 2.5 years to pass something that Scott's got up at the PAC meeting and said is going to take 20 months from start to finish. Why are we giving them an additional two and a half years? It makes no sense. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I'll ask again if there's anyone who would like to speak against the application.
Worship, councilors, my name is Shaolin, and I live at, Shaolin Chase, and I live at 468 Pelton Road. I guess I would like to start with my biggest concern. At our PC meeting in July, staff and PAC members could not define supportive facility and communal dining. A discussion followed for a definition of supportive facility, and they settled on an apartment for individuals that are 65 years and older. That was said at our PAC meeting. Human Rights Commission of New Brunswick clearly states that you cannot discriminate with regards to age for employment, housing, or services. In determining a definition for communal dining, no one could conclusively provide a definition. The most disappointing part of this was that PAC made a decision without facts to proceed with the changes requested by the developer. This is no longer a supportive facility. It is an apartment building, therefore, different zoning applies. No one has really given the definition of supportive facility. We've all spoke about it, but it's well-written. An establishment licensed or approved by government agency that provides care and supervision to residents on a 24-hour basis by professional staff, or an establishment devoted to retired residents where common amenities and service, including communal dining, are provided exclusively to such seniors. This proposal indicate outsourcing of food and health services, and there is no guarantee of provision of communal dining and health services. We talked about massage therapists. A profitable business plan for either of these services in a close community of 167 household is highly doubtful. Where are the general health services? Massage therapy or physio? We need the general health services in a facility like this. Mr. Walton assured us that these services could only be available to the residents. Well, good luck in finding health professional that will rent your space with the number of residents in a secluded area like Sandy Point Road, Pelton Road area. One concept that has not been addressed at PAC meeting or by staff in response to the proposal is our request to no traffic, construction, and otherwise. Well, Jill covered that very well. I think I, I will stop there. The road cannot, Pelton Road cannot take it. The safety is an issue. Several plows, which the city should have records of it, has gone in the ditch. We've recently had a big construction truck that went off the road. We took pictures. So I guess I'm, I'm very, very worried about 120 parking spot for 167 apartment, which we're talking about 200-plus people living there, cannot accommodate the number of vehicle, the occupants, staff, and visitors. So where are they going to go if they don't have a parking spot, Pelton Road? I am not advocating for a larger parking space area. I am just bringing to your attention the inconsistency of this present proposal that was promoted two years ago. A large asphalt parking lot does not conform with the country environment of our community and also environmentally damaging with the runoff to the river, our wells, and our septic tanks. Every year, the water goes right to our property, and it goes right through our well. So we have to, to deal with E. coli, and it's a very upsetting thing. With regards to the sunset clause being extended for another five years without a start date for construction, this project runs the risk of being another on-the-book déjà vu in the city of St. John, project that offers nothing to the housing crisis to St. John, of St. John. Let's spend, let's spend our staff time and expertise on project that has viability and closely resemble our growth plan and Plan SJ. This is why, there was an article this morning in Telegraph Journal. This is why Shidjak is doing better with building permits than St. John. When they approve a project, it's an area that is zoned appropriately. Just recently, they've approved a supportive facility, but it's put into an area that is already zoned for this supportive facility. And the developers are starting the project after approval instead of trying to sell the project to outside investors. We have come to learn from CBC News article that the hole on King Street was approved with no sunset clause, and the taxpayers have potential to lose funding from the federal government if the project is not finished by 2026. This is not fair for the taxpayers of St. John. I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll ask again if there's anyone here who'd like to speak against the application. I'm going to, oh, hold on, I've got two more. Come forward, give us your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Greg Collins, Your Worship, fellow councilors. I live at 467 Pelton Road, so all of my colleagues here tonight, speaking on our behalf, certainly, we don't support this facility, this apartment building that's going in. I've spoken to Mr. Walton and Ian a few different times on different occasions, and I can tell you from being a developer myself that there is certainly unclarity here in this development. We are seeing some changes in the last minute, major changes, and I really think that we need to take a serious look at all of these changes and what it means to the zoning law. We're asking about when Mr. Reed put that up earlier today, tonight, we could see in black and white the differences. So today, if I'm a developer and developing an apartment building, what is the difference between major community, supportive facility, and an apartment building? What is it? Can anybody tell me here?
That's for our staff. Our staff has recommended and advised us in the kit, so that question we can ask to our staff when they come back up.
Okay, because that is the million-dollar question, because otherwise, we are setting a precedent here tonight for any developer that is coming into the city and developing an apartment building. That is one of the things we need to think about. The other thing that we need to think about here tonight is, is this the proper place for this facility? We've talked about that in 2021. It did get approved because the land purchase had taken place, but are there other areas in this city that could facilitate a supportive facility such as this in a better capacity? That really is the biggest question, and I think really, we know that there are places around that would accommodate that. I guess some of the biggest things that I see is the change in the parking lot at 467 Pelton Road. Obviously, I am the closest house besides Mr. and Mrs., I'm sorry, I lost her last name at the moment, but, but Bazaluck and, you know, that, that I'm sorry, I lost her last name at the moment, but Basiluk and, you know, that is one of the major things that I see is that it has set back, the building has set back, but the parking lot has not. So obviously, when we saw the pictures tonight of two of the properties that are adjacent there, one of them is mine, but what we didn't see is the tree line directly between that facility and my property. There are no trees there at all. So that is one thing that I think we should take a look at is how that presentation looked tonight, is that that tree buffer zone is not really there. And to have everything changed in terms of the setback, obviously, the parking lot being closer to the main road of Pelton is going to be an issue for runoff and water storm, definitely. We're talking about an increase in size of the units. We know that's been said several times tonight, 33%. That is huge, major, major difference. I think if we were going to be doing that as any other unit, we would, any other apartment building, we would have a major, I guess, discussion around that that must have taken place privately. But I think when we're talking about changing the parking structure as well to accommodate that size change, that is really one thing that I have concern with. I'm not opposed to growth in the city. I have a current project in place right now, but I am opposed to this project and where it's at. Of course, the changes that are going to be in place and the sunset clause that we're talking with. You know, two and a half years, I think if that would be a reasonable request, had there been things already started. We have not seen anything done. There has been no, other than the strips that have been placed on Foster Thurston by the Cherry Brook Zoo, other than that, there has been nothing. There's been ditches dug out in Sandy Point Road. I think it was late last year. That's about all. So we're asking for two and a half more years. Where are we with the project? We have asked that question, if he has a budget in place, the timeline of it. We have not heard anything about that. So we do know that right now, that is an unknown. And when we're asking for two and a half years of addition for 20 months of completion, estimated by Mr. Walton, I don't know where we're getting all of these numbers from. There's so many inconsistencies here that it should be a really, really big, I guess, question and red light of why we must ask for a pause on this or not approve this application for the change. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. I'll ask again if there's anyone, Joan, would like to speak against the application? Did you want your cane there? Okay, you're good.
I'm one of those candidates for this establishment. I fit the criteria, but I would never-
I need your name and your dress first, Joan, just for the record.
Okay, thank you. Joan Pierce. I live at 352 Pelton Road. I have quite a few comments to make here, but really and truly, most of what I have here has already been said. I just want to make sure that you actually understand as a group that this is really not a major supportive facility. The amenities, the services are by zoning law supposed to include communal dining, and they are to be provided exclusively to senior residents. There was supposed to be underground parking, which would be an amenity. That definitely is a service. I'm 80 years old. If I go off to, if I go, if I have to go out to a parking lot when the snowplow comes, get myself all dressed up in my winter clothes, and go out to take the snow off my car, move my car in order for the snowplow to come in, and plow the parking lot, then I have to go back out when it's finished to move the car again. Is that an amenity? Not for somebody who doesn't want to break their neck going out on a slippery parking lot? It just doesn't make any sense to me. Anyway, you were promised in 2021, promised 50 employees. Those 50 employees, we can assume from the examples of Shadow Champlain and also Parkland, that they were going to, those employees were going to provide services. The services that would be devoted to supporting the people who were there. That means the communal dining, the housekeeping. At Shadow Champlain, there's somebody comes into the apartment and actually cleans the apartment once a week. Laundry services, they change the beds, they do the wash. That's a service. Those are amenities that are in a supportive facility. There really isn't any indication in this proposal that these services are going to be provided. You've already heard about the no transit service, and that is a requirement of this particular zoning. It's not here. The proposal has added a story and the footprint of the building has changed. If you were looking closely at Mr. Reed's presentation, I have in here, could I ask councilors to please turn to the document listed as public hearing, Ethos Ridge, pages three and four? And that was just, that was the document that was presented to you by Mr. Reed. You will see that the entire building has changed from what was offered in 2021, which the council of the day approved in 2021. And this one is totally different. In one of, in one of the staff reports to you, it was indicated that this new proposal follows policy LU90. If you look at policy LU90, you are going to see, in my opinion, that none of these fit. None of them are followed. But that's just my opinion. City staff in their report to PAC regarding these amendments very clearly states, I quote, "From a high-level perspective, the proposal still, still conforms to the development vision." So I wonder, what exactly does high-level perspective mean? If I were to ask each of you, would you be able to tell me what high-level perspective means?
Joan, I will say that you, the audience saw a very quick snapshot up there. In our kit, this item is 127 pages, so it's a lot, it's a lot more-
I know, but it was shown tonight in that presentation, those two different shapes of the building. So anyway, have you, have you thought about what high-level perspective means? Well, I looked it up. I got a dictionary out, checked it out. I just, at the time when I did it, I was wondering if this was some kind of a code word that only certain people knew what meant. Anyway, the definition turns out to be, one of the definitions turns out to be, high-level skips a lot of details, but gives a broad overview of the project. So this may explain why some of the details in these amendments are not as specific as they should be. And from my perspective, I would like to know the specific details on how the proposed amendment has all the residents eating the same meal at the same time in the same place, which is what communal dining is. Has the developer done a marketing study to see if any retiree would consider moving to Ethos Ridge without owning a car? Everybody in the neighborhood owns a car. You have to have a car if you want to get anywhere or do anything, buy anything, do any banking, do anything. So there has to be parking, I would think, for everybody, one parking, one parking spot, at least for every, every number of units. And the winter, the winter problems with surface parking are immense, I believe. About the sunset clause, in 2021, it was written in staff reports that common council's approval of the development would be contingent on the developer's ability to meet a five-year sunset clause, whereby the city can revoke the land's rezoning designation if work is not completed within five years. Already, two and a half years have passed and nothing has happened on the site. In 2021, Ethos Ridge promised to start construction in a few months and implied that all financing was in place. I think the developers should have known in 2021 that there would be a lot of rock that had to be excavated to build the driveway and have both the pool and the underground parking. Practically, the whole city is on bedrock, so they should have been aware that construction was going to be expensive. So now they're saying that because of the expense of going underground, they're going to have the surface parking. Well, that's changing what they proposed in 2021. I personally feel that this development will not come to fruition, even if you do extend the time to seven years. It will be very costly to construct the road into the site, to put in water and sewage, to repave a portion of Sandy Point Road. And the developers have promised that the development will be started in a couple of months. It will take much longer than a few months to get the traffic study done, to check on a possible wetland where the building is supposed to be sited, to get the required permits, and to fulfill all the requirements of those said permits. It was implied at the planning advisory committee meeting that there were a lot of applicants for CMHC funding, so funding may be delayed. There are promises made here by the developers that I feel cannot be achieved. And I agree with Greg, who said that there should be a pause on this development until everything is really looked at more carefully. And actually, I think that this is really a high-end apartment building and as such cannot be built in this zone. And I just have one other thing, and this is out of the realm a bit of about construction vehicles on Pelton Road. There's not, there is a condition already here, and there has, planning staff has not asked for a change in this condition, but I would like to point out that what we have now here is there shall be no vehicular access to the development off Pelton Road, and the entrance to Pelton Road is to be gated and utilized only by service vehicles required for limited inspection and maintenance of the lift station and pad mount transformer. All other vehicles are to enter the site from Sandy Point Road. So that's in the traffic, this was addressing the traffic bylaw, section 193. But what we don't know, or none of us were aware of, there is a section 194 in the traffic bylaw, which says that vehicles over 4,500 kilograms use the safest shortcut route through any local road from a truck route to the construction site, which would allow construction vehicles on Pelton Road, particularly those that are over 4,500 kilograms. However, using Pelton Road will require approval from the commissioner. This would mean, I assume, that the commissioner could grant approval for the use of Pelton Road before, during, and after construction of vehicles. So you know what? If I hadn't looked that up, none of us would have known that despite that very strongly worded recommendation and condition, it could, like, the commissioner can allow it to happen, whether or not that previous condition was there. So I think that that needs to be addressed in some way. And I will say that I polled quite a few of my friends who are in the category for this development, and none of them would come, none would come if there weren't a parking spot for them, underground parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll ask again if there's anyone who would like to speak against the application. Come on down and give us your name and address, please.
Your worship councilors, John Moat, 470 Pelton Road. I'll just speak briefly. I appreciate you've been here a long time. Certainly, I think what happened initially was in April of two years ago, there was an agreement to build a four-story senior citizens complex that was going to be below the tree line, not visible from Sandy Point Road, would fit into the environment. The neighborhood disagreed, but eventually it was approved. Certainly, what's gone on now in the last two years is now the proposal in front of us is significantly different. So it's aimed at a different demographic. They're talking about younger, more active senior. They're talking about individuals that'll be more mobile, won't necessarily need all the services that the previous group would. And the rationale behind this is in a financial hardship trying to build the initial development. So the new proposal in front of us is that of a five-story building, which is higher than it's supposed to be based on the current zoning. It will be visible now from Sandy Point Road. It's certainly going to be a lot more visible from the neighborhood of Pelton Road. And then the other concern with that is they've gotten rid of a lot of the amenities as already described, one of them being the underground parking. And that's resulted in significant potential hardship, both aesthetically and also the practicality of having at least an acre, and what sounds like even a larger parking lot potentially, that would result in more light and sound pollution, certainly significant flooding issues, water going into the river and into neighborhoods' wells and flooding neighborhood properties. And I think certainly that has to be addressed, the whole concept of changing something this dramatically, from what sounded like a seniors' complex to now it's just a glorified apartment building that doesn't appear to have really the amenities that you would expect. And certainly, this doesn't sound as though it's going to have communal dining. It sounds like everyone's going to be living in a separate apartment. The car parking business certainly sounds like a significant issue. If you have to go out and wipe off your car, that is a hardship. But if the parking lot's not big enough and you don't have a place to put your car, to have your car on Sandy Point Road to park on the street or park it on Pelton Road, you would have to walk a half a kilometer to get your car. So if there's no parking there, you basically can't have a car. And if you don't have a car, how do you get to the grocery store that's seven kilometers away? So there seems to be a disconnect in this new proposal of a bigger building, but with no parking available, which doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. The other concerns with the sunset clause, obviously, is we've been told in the past, two years ago, over two years ago, that this, they were going to start right away, they had the funding, everything was going to be done in 20 months. Well, nothing's been done to date. And so continuing to extend that doesn't really, really make a, doesn't really make all that much sense. The concern certainly we have is, there is a need for seniors' housing, no question, but there's also a need for affordable seniors' housing. And I don't think there's any accommodation for affordable senior housing here. And that's certainly what St. John needs, not a luxury apartment building that people can't park their car in and is not, doesn't sound overly feasible. And the fact that we've had to, you know, the proponent wants to make all these concessions to about 33% bigger building and less amenities and a bigger parking spot, obviously means there's been some significant increase in financing and increase in building costs, which we've seen with lots of developments. But what I'm concerned is, if it's that, if they're having that much trouble building this, that they have to build such a larger building with so fewer amenities and change this model, is this fiscally responsible? Is this something that Plan St. John, Policy I-8 should be enacted whereby detailed fiscal analysis is done of the area by an outside professional source paid for by the proponent, such that we know that this is a possible functional plan that will actually go to fruition? So we don't spend time building or half-building something that doesn't go through? And that certainly would be the biggest concern, is cutting down a bunch of trees, putting in a big road, and then having a non-functioning area? Because then at the end of the day, you would have to build an apartment building or two apartment buildings, which is obviously something I don't think anyone would agree was a good idea.
All right. But thank you so much. I'll ask again if there's anyone who'd like to speak against. Come forward, give us your name and address. Come forward, give us your name and address.
I'm Sarah Gander. I don't live on Pelton Road. I did, though, because I grew up there. So if you'll just indulge me for a minute, excuse me. I live on 66 Marlin Drive, so I live in Millageville. But I couldn't help but just take a minute to say a little bit of something different as somebody who grew up on Pelton Road and am raising my boys, who sometimes play on Pelton Road and in the area. So I'm very excited to hear about progress in this city. Many of you know me. I have three big priorities in my life. Number one is community, number two is children, and number three is the environment. How many times have we heard in the news lately about beaches being shut down, water being compromised because of different types of runoff and considerations with the environment? So I just ask city councillors and city staff to really consider what that means for our community in and around Sandy Point Road, many of which include children's camps and children, like, facilities and some of our parks. From a children's standpoint, I'd just like to say that when I learned how to ride a bike, and if you've been on Pelton Road, you know what the road is like. That's how I learned to huff it up a road, and I knew every little crack in the pavement when I tried to get further and further up the road. I'm 44 years old, you guys. Those cracks are still there, because my six-year-old and my 10-year-old are looking at those cracks. So that's the amount of priority of the roadkeep that has been on Pelton Road thus far. And the other part, when you look at, like, community and activity, you want to build a facility that has activity and active seniors and active adults. There are no sidewalks, there are no bike lanes. And really, almost two cars passing each other is a little bit edgy. So when you think about what's actually available for people to be active, to be part of a community, and to preserve, which many of the people of the Pelton Road community have young families, just consider what that means to the impact for the environment, children, and the actual community that's there at Pelton Road. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak against the application? I'll ask again if there's anyone who would like to speak against the application.
Good evening. I'm Colin Forsyth. I live at 2151 Sandy Point Road. To put into context my background and expertise, I hold undergraduate degrees in environmental science, as well as master's degrees in environmental science and management. I'm the 2017 recipient of a governor general's award for environmental science. And I have worked on environmental science in and around St. John for 20 years now, starting with harbor cleanup. I was one of the many people that worked very diligently to get that $88 million guarantee, so that we could upgrade the city's sewage systems. Since then, I've worked on many other projects, like Canaport LNG from an environmental perspective, at the pulp and paper mill, helping do environmental work on some of the upgrades there. And I often work as an environmental consultant on projects just like this. I love projects that help the city grow, and I love projects that are really smart development. And I've watched this project for two years, and I can tell you from that perspective of my experience that there's very little smart or intelligent thought that has seemed to have gone into this particular project. I will note a number of different things. On that May 10th session that the proponent had, there were many questions, many of them could not be answered by the proponent, although the proponent had that environmental information two and a half years earlier, because I had already previously asked those questions. You would think that in that time period, they would have actually looked that up or found an expert to do so. They'll tell you that they hired N-Globe out of Moncton to do some of that environmental work. I can tell you that I did a lot of the environmental work for N-Globe. And we parted ways some time ago. But they have to bring people in from Halifax, who are more junior people, to do that work. And what they did was something we call a Phase One environmental assessment. This is very different from an environmental impact assessment. A Phase One environmental assessment looks at things like asbestos and gas and other chemical contaminants that are of anthropogenic origin on a site. Not entirely appropriate for a natural site where you would want to look at specific things like species at risk, like ecosystem services, or like the two wetlands that have been mentioned numerous times by many of my neighbors, who will attest to you how badly it floods now with them there, let alone once they're gone, because there's a parking lot on it. Now, sure enough, they can probably get a Wawa permit and compensate, and that means that they have to go build a wetland somewhere else that comes at great cost to them, and maybe that happens. But all too often, I've seen that that does not. The other thing that I would like to point out is the very shallow groundwater that is there. I don't doubt that part of their geotechnical study, which I have requested in the past but have never received, that that geotechnical study quite showed that. And it would also have shown that the hydrostatic pressure generated by that shallow groundwater would likely float the building off of its foundation if it's not anchored properly. Again, without some of that information, I can't be entirely certain of that. But I can tell you, shallow groundwater means much easier to contaminate. And when you have a parking lot that will have oils and antifreezes and gasolines and road salts, okay? That will sooner or later begin to contaminate those homes, especially when those parking lots are very, very close to that boundary. And they're right, there aren't a lot of trees there now between their boundary. I've known that land for almost 50 years. I'm intimately familiar about it. I actually grew up with Sarah. Hi, Sarah. So, and it is a very interesting and ecologically diverse place. I can tell you that I had conducted, two and a half years ago, a species at risk survey of that site. And that survey showed a number of species at risk, a number of federally listed species at risk. And although that's outside the purview of the city, because that's a federal jurisdiction, and that environment is a provincial jurisdiction. And as Mark will tell you, or as I can tell you, if this thing didn't sit inside the city, it would have been slapped with an environmental impact assessment so fast that it made your head spin. Inside the city, it doesn't do that. And that's a concern, because as one of my neighbors pointed out, I know the city is committed to doing better by the environment, and we need to start thinking about these things now. When this building was originally proposed, it was certainly much more of interest than as it is being proposed now. Now, I really see a glorified apartment building. I've worked on enough of them over the last 20 years to know an apartment building in sheep's clothing when I see one. And what I see here is exactly that. I see a lot of environmental red flags that have never been properly addressed, okay? I see water quality issues, I see flooding issues, I see a whole bunch of stuff. And I still continue to see, despite the fact that you work on this, everybody says vacant land. Define for me what is a vacant land, because that land right now is performing a number of ecosystem services. Do you know who doesn't pay for those ecosystem services right now? Taxpayers, because the environment's paying for them for us. But once we start to destroy that site, or alter it, or change it, we have to start paying for those. We have to compensate for that. Now, you might say that the tax dollars will fit that, okay? Maybe they do. But unless we have a calculation for what our lost ecosystem services is, how do we know what that value is? How do we put a number on it and say, "Okay, the ecosystem services here are only a million bucks, but we're going to make $4 million off this building"? Well, maybe it's a good trade then, but we don't know that, because we don't get that information, okay? For two and a half years, all right, the proponent has worked largely in secrecy, has never been terribly forward, has never been terribly transparent.
We're going to have an opportunity to ask the proponent what he's done.
I've asked the proponent many times, Mr. Mayor.
Pardon me?
I've asked the proponent many times for this kind of stuff.
I said, "We will have the opportunity."
I hope so. So, because I haven't seen it yet, and it is quite frustrating. I'm sure you can understand that.
Definitely.
So, there's a number of questions. It raises concern. It shows a lack of due diligence when they've had that information for a number of years. And it really, really makes me skeptical that it is a viable project. It's certainly not a project that fits well in a single-family home setting. If there were other developments proposed there, like garden homes, for instance, or single-family homes that fit with the neighborhood and with the area, I doubt I'd even be standing here. But this is an odd project for the site that really, as many have pointed out, has a whole bunch of red flags floating around it that are of concern. Anyways, I don't want to take up more of your time. Many have spoken to you, and I would simply be repeating what they said. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Counselor Harris, did you have a question?
Sorry, can you come back up so I can ask you a quick question? You have to help me understand something, because I'm getting some cognitive dissonance in your assessment. We've got a five-acre project here, or sorry, we've got an acre -- multi-acre project here that's happening. And you're saying that if this was filled with single-family detached homes, you wouldn't have the same environmental concerns as you do on this highly condensed, more efficient use of land?
No, I wouldn't.
How? Help me understand.
Well, there would be significantly less pavement, for instance. And the single-family homes wouldn't create a large-scale road up over the top of the site. It would come in off of the end of Pelton. If you notice the map, there's a turnaround there that allows that cul-de-sac to be extended. And single-family homes in this area require at least an acre space. And a large amount of that acre of space would actually not be covered by the home itself. It would be covered by vegetation or landscaping, right? Not asphalt specifically, right? And as a single-family home, again, they would have the same provisions to be required to move that home outside of the wetland boundaries. This, the parking lot, it makes it a lot more difficult for them to avoid that wetland, just based on the size of that footprint.
Okay, interesting. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I'll ask again if there's anyone else who would like to speak against the application? Anyone else who would like to speak against the application? For the third time in a row, anyone else who would like to speak against the application? Okay, I'll move on to anyone who would like to speak in favor of the application. I'll ask you to come forward, give us your name.
Mayor. See the presentation? Okay, great. Thank you to your worship council, PAC, staff members, and the neighborhood for providing your input.
We're going to take your name?
Oh, yeah, Scott Walton, 215 Jermaine Street. We agree with PAC's approval and staff's recommendation to advance the Section 59 amendment. So our vision for Ethos is a wellness-focused living experience for seniors. The 20-acre site we purchased and rezoned is nothing short of captivating and is a key part of the experience we are creating. We evaluated many sites, and this one was the only viable option based on the characteristics we were looking for, and obviously, sites that were for sale. We're building a high-quality residence that is immersed amongst tree canopy, waterfront, hiking paths, once we create them, and elevated views. This will be occupied or coupled with supportive services, communal dining, and amenities aimed at proactive wellness and socialization. We see that there's a very distinct need and opportunity for something like this in St. John. We are building a place that people will be proud to call home. So today, one of my partners and I are here to discuss updates to our site plan and project. And I am going to first cover two items in my presentation. First, what has happened since we originally rezoned the property, and then, secondly, how we have adapted to such changes. Unforeseen circumstances in the market have drastically changed the development landscape. As a result, we need to make some adjustments to the number of units, the parking positioning, and building design. These changes enable us to proceed and also have a positive effect on the neighboring Pelton Road community. To move forward, we were advised that we need to file a Section 59 amendment, which is why we're here today. And this was recommended by planning and development staff and approved at the last PAC meeting. The amendment is largely focused on the parking location, number of units, and our timeline. So just to talk through some of the changes in our development environment. So first, obviously, the war, coronavirus, recessionary symptoms have had profound effects on nearly every industry, especially construction and development. We really wanted to start our development in the fall of 2021. We meant that when we said it at our PAC and council meetings. However, with the volatility of construction prices, availability of labor, and supply shortages, we repriced the project two times that year, and both times, we exhibited 20% price increases in our budget. There were some comments earlier about not factoring in things like the cost of rock breaking and the servicing to the site. Those all were factored into the initial budget as we did pilot hole studies all throughout the property, so we knew what type of bedrock that we were building on, which is a very hard rock. So inflation peaked at the highest level in over 20 years. Interest rates quadrupled since we started this. And the interest rates recently hit the highest level in 23 years. Supply chain disruptions because of the war and some of the issues in the canal sparked price volatilities all across apartment building and development. The other challenge is that our building has much less profit efficiency and wiggle room than a standard apartment building. We have a lot of floor space in our building that is allocated towards amenities that are either non-revenue or lower-revenue generating areas, as opposed to units. So with all of these things happening, it was essentially impossible to proceed with the original site plan and pro forma. We would have been making a grave mistake if we started that year. The ceiling rate for taking out the construction loan was estimated at 8%, which was about a 5% increase from the original budget. That jump happened within the span of about 12 months. So as an example, on a $50 million construction loan, that's a $2.5 million increase in interest alone to your bottom line. So we weren't alone in this chasm. There was a long list of approved projects in 2021 that unfortunately never materialized as a result of these new realities. One of the people on our team has led the development of over 5,600 senior housing units across Canada. He personally witnessed a lot of projects end up in detrimental positions because they chose the wrong time to start. And he was advocating heavily that we wait until things stabilize in the market. So this also meant that while we were sitting waiting to start our project and adapt to what was changing in the market, the demand for senior housing in our market kept growing. We already had one of the largest senior population concentrations in Canada. And because of what happened with COVID and rising costs of living in other cities across Canada, we saw one of the largest migration levels that we've ever experienced in 50 years here in St. John. So next, I'd like to talk about what we did adjust in our plan to adapt to these new pricing realities. So first of all, we could have easily given up and hung up the gloves, but we're committed to our vision of making this happen and solve part of the housing gap. I agree earlier with the comment that there is a huge need for affordable senior housing, but these two things aren't mutually exclusive. There's housing requirements that are not being met across the spectrum of affordability and product. So that's what a lot of project developers did across Canada. They gave up. We refused to do that. To adapt to the much higher cost to build and higher interest rates, we increased the number of units, and we came up with a more efficient floor plate for the building. So the building is actually smaller than it was previously, 167,000 square feet, as opposed to 232. This is largely because of the removal of the pool, spa, and underground parking. We moved parking to the surface, which means less rock breaking and blasting. It's a premium amenity, but considering our target market is active seniors that are focused on wellness, we don't believe that they'll mind walking 50 feet, and we could always implement a valet service. We did interview -- there was a question earlier about whether we did interview senior, existing senior residents of other supportive facilities. We did. We interviewed 100 people in three different retirement living facilities in St. John and took notes on every aspect of what they were looking for in terms of amenities, quality of finishes, what services they had on-site, and dining preferences. ourselves in the market. A typical apartment building has certain amenities and typically only a concierge service. So usually you would see a gym, maybe some resident storage, a community room with some TVs, a pool table, a package room, and perhaps a cafe in some buildings. Examples of this would be buildings like Calabria, Wentworth, Telegraph. Our building, which is a supportive building, has amenities such as dining, gym, resident storage, the same things as, similar things as an apartment building, but also other particular areas like treatment rooms, maker space, walking trails, wine cellar, library, et cetera. And even more distinctly is the services that we will providing in our type of building, which would be things like a reception, personal care, aesthetics, treatment, physical therapy, food boxes, housekeeping, laundry, and perhaps transportation. Examples of this would be Chateau Champlain and Shanex. So in closing, with this, with the new site plan, we do believe there's a lot of positives for the Pelton Road community. Because of the building design, there's far fewer units actually facing the Pelton Road area, and it is further setback. We do believe that we're able to control the lighting and noise from parking from the closer parking lot using landscape buffering. And again, there's benefits from this new design with a reduction in rock blasting and breaking as a result of moving the parking. It is a smaller building, and we will make a bigger impact on the housing issue with the increased unit count. There have been challenges along the way, but we have a very experienced and persistent team. We are aiming to start construction before the end of the year, but we're advised to ask for additional time in case other unforeseen challenges like we've seen in the past couple of years. We can't start soon enough, so it's not a matter of that we think there's going to be delays in the next steps of our project. It's just whether there are things that happen that are outside our control. We're excited to make this a reality and to motivate other developers to introduce other high-quality buildings to the region. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? I have one. Oh, Counselor Killen? Over to you.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Mr. Walton. Could you, I guess, explain to me this, this why, you know, going to, how are you a supportive service if it has less sort of amenities? And I hear that concern quite a few times. So in that shift over a little bit to providing a little less, like, are you still in that category? Do you still feel solidly that you are a supportive place?
Yeah, I think if you look up, the slide disappeared, but on the slide that I showed, the last one, we talk about the amenities that we have, and we do believe we fit in that category because we do have the long list of amenities but also services.
Right, okay, so that's not, not what you, you wouldn't consider any changes have happened there?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, other than the pool and the spa, we did remove those two amenities.
Right, okay.
Counselor Sullivan, over to you.
I've got three questions. I'll just give them to you and let you have at them. First is being a supportive facility for seniors, what is your plan for transportation for residents, given the concerns that have been expressed? My second question is mitigation plans for the surface water now that you are in asphalt parking lot as opposed to being underground? Both, originally for me it was quantity but also quality of the runoff. And PAC had a recommendation that staff recommended against with regards to expanding of the parking lot, so I would ask at this time if it's in your current thoughts that you plan on expanding the parking lot. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. One of the questions I'm going to defer to Ian in his presentation, he'll cover, which is surface water handling. So transportation for residents, what we discussed in the PAC meeting was if we found that there is a large enough need while surveying people when they're signing up for their suites, that we were going to exceed the, that need for people going to the grocery store or, you know, wherever they're going, then we would put some type of service in place. Where we're at with the number of parking spaces is there's a, there's a range that you have for a building like this, a supportive building, and we're actually above the ratio that's recommended. But again, that's because we're going after not your, not your typical, like, like exact resident, again, because there's that flavor of active living and wellness. So they'll be a bit more independent than the typical person, which is why we've allowed for more parking. The cap on parking that was recommended, we didn't think made sense because we discussed that we may not have enough parking, but then we were discussing potentially putting a cap, so we, we didn't think that that made sense in terms of that approach.
Deputy, over to you.
Thank you, Your Worship. Scott, the, you might wonder why I'm asking this question. I'll explain it later, but you talk about amenities and you talk about, like, something like a cafeteria. How many seats does your cafeteria have?
Our floor plan for the dining area is about the same as it was in the original plan, which was spec'd for 90 seats.
For how much?
90.
And how many people are going to be there?
200 and some, yeah. But what you typically see in these buildings is that people eat in phases as opposed to all at once. So we looked at what people do in retirement living residences from across Canada, and that was, like, especially where we have full kitchens in each of the units. We felt like that would meet the need, and that, again, that was under the, it also had the input of someone on our team that, again, developed all those residences and the trends that they were seeing, so.
So in your presentation, you compared some of the amenities to apartments like the Wellington and stuff like that around town?
Yep.
Right? And then you compared it to, like, Chateau Champlain and Shanex.
Mm-hmm.
So with, what is it that you're doing here? Are you doing an apartment building that has more amenities than some apartments? Or are you doing a seniors' complex that doesn't have the same amenities as others?
It's much closer to a Shanex or Chateau Champlain. And in fact, you know, there was comments earlier about internally staff versus external services and care. Chateau doesn't have any support and care staff, like, they bring in all their outside service providers. And Shanex actually does offer that internally, but they also have the option where you can bring in your outside care.
Yeah, we can't have, we can't have, excuse me, we cannot have anybody, we, you, the audience has had their opportunity to speak. Now it's our, the opportunity for, and you weren't interrupted by the proponents, so this is only fair ball. We've asked, asked everybody to be respectful. I just read my, our little proclamation this morning, this earlier, about being respectful and listening, so that's what I'm asking everyone to please do. I know this is emotional, but we need to gather our information.
And there's no, just to add on to that, there's no stipulation that it needs to be internally provided service versus an externally operated one. So we didn't feel that, like, we, we've discussed this long in advance of this meeting, just to understand if we are still in line with, with our existing designation. And there was no, there's no subtext that says, you know, you need to have any supportive services you're providing need to be internally operated. And quite frankly, we'd like the best operator to provide them.
Okay, I understand that, but one of the selling points in '21 was 50 new jobs.
Yeah, well, those jobs will still exist because the services are there. Whether or not we're paying that payroll, it doesn't change, doesn't have an impact on the economy, in my opinion.
Okay. That's all for now, thank you.
Counselor Lowe, over to you. Oh, second, yeah.
How many employees, how many employees were you hiring in '21? How many did you tell us in PAC in '21 you're hiring for that building?
I believe it was 40 to 50.
Were they nurses, LPNs, and social?
It was a mix of providers to provide all those services up there.
So now, none of those people, there'll be no nurses there, there'll be no LPNs or social?
They'll be there, they just won't be on our payroll.
They'll be there, but they won't be on the payroll.
Yep.
What, 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 what does that mean? They'll be there?
It means that-
I really don't understand that.
It means they'll be providing the services and outside provider, just like it happens at Shanex and Chateau Champlain.
No, that, I don't, they'll be there, but they won't be on your payroll. Whose payroll will be on? The individual people that are there?
An in-home care provider.
Who?
An in-home care provider.
And try, okay, I'm, I'm next up. Explain that to me.
Someone like Judy Lane's company that, and again, she does this, she sends her staff, PSWs, LPNs, RNs, to people's houses, like was mentioned earlier, but also buildings, whether they're Shanex, Chateau Champlain, La Colman Villa.
So, so when you revised your cost, that was eliminated as a cost because you said there was 45 and they're going to be on your payroll. Now they're not on your payroll.
Yep.
So when you increased it by 33 apartments, that's 33 times some dollars times year after year after year after year. And this is year after year after year after year. And when you removed the parking from underground, you, you didn't have to blast if there was rock there, so that was a saving too. That was year after year after year after year.
Correct.
And when you figured that all out, year after year after year?
Yep.
This is what you took out of this project?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. It was a Rubik's Cube, honestly, of getting, it was a Rubik's Cube of getting the pro forma to work.
Counselor Redmond, over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First of all, Mr. Walton, thank you for wanting to invest in St. John. I appreciate it. I do have a few questions. I'm just wondering if there's going to be 10 or more residents cared for on a 24-hour basis as part of the cost that they're paying for you for rent?
It'd be an incremental cost for them.
Okay. Are there, out of all these amenities, are there any what's actually communal, which means they're included as part of their rent? Because that's how it would be-
Yep.
-inclusive to everybody. That's the whole word of communal, communal dining. And so specifically, I'm wondering about communal dining.
Mm-hmm. So the dining, they would be paying for themselves, but it's still, when we looked at the definition of communal dining, it's the ability to eat with the other residents in the building in the central area. It wasn't necessarily whether that was a prepaid amenity or if it was a pay-as-you-go amenity.
Well, the definition of communal itself is shared by all members of the community, so that's basically removing barriers, like financial barriers. So I, I'll respectfully disagree with that one, but I'm just wondering, there may have been, there may be issues with wells if you're, I don't know if you're going to have to blast still because there's no underground parking. Do you know if you're going to have to blast?
I'll defer to Ian on that one as well, if you don't mind. Thank you.
So I'm just really wondering if there, so what's the probability of there being well damage to the citizens' wells?
The probability?
Hmm.
Well, we have a requirement to deliver a net zero impact, and ideally, we make an improvement to that. But when we did the hydrology study with Englobe, it showed that the aquifer on the site was not connected to the downgradient wells, and it was clearly stipulated in the report.
I mean, I'm, I'm not an environmentalist, but you're, you're doing everything up on the hill. So, I mean, so if there is damage to the wells, like, I've watched a previous council meeting, I've looked at the previous council package, I've looked out through all of this, I've looked at Plan S.J., I've done my homework. There was some mention, I think it was at PAC, that insurance would cover it.
Yep.
But we all know how long insurance can take. If there was damage to somebody's well, what are you prepared to do to help the resident with that damage?
We're open to suggestions, but I just, from previous experience, the insurance covers it, but if there's-
There's no plan. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, does anyone have any questions, any more questions with regards to the Section 59 amendments? I'm, okay, that, you're going to bring your, okay, your colleague up. Thank you.
Thanks.
So we'd just like to get your name only. We know you were a part of the-
My name's Ian MacLeod.
Ian MacLeod?
Sorry.
What did you say? Ian MacLeod?
Ian MacLeod, yes.
Thank you, Ian.
I'm a partner on the Ethos project. I've been with Scott since, since day one. Good evening, everyone.
Okay.
So I'm going to talk tonight about parking, about dining, about some of the impacts that we've studied on the site. Parking has been, been talked about a fair bit in the, in the meeting here tonight, so the way that we're viewing parking lot is that it's a, it's an engineered solution. There are a variety of, there's a permitting process in place with a variety of restrictions that should protect neighbors from runoff, and we will be looking at that when we get to the detailed design stage of this project. We want to, you know, we, we moved the parking lot to the surface in the first place, first because there's an economic benefit to the project, but also because we wanted to avoid blasting on the site, avoid potential impact to wells and that sort of thing, and felt that, you know, in addition to, to the other benefits, having a manageable impact on the surface is superior to a, to a, difficult to manage potential impact beneath the surface. We want to, we want to keep the parking lot design unrestricted with respect to the, with the parking cap because there's ample room on the site to create additional parking, particularly, particularly to the southwest of the parking that's shown on the site plan right now. We're aware of the potential for having to apply for a water course alteration permit. We need to be flexible to accommodate that. As we learn more about our, our residents and their parking needs, we want to be able to flex to, to, to accommodate that. So I think as long as we're following the process that's set out by the city and we're ensuring that we're having a net zero impact with water runoff to the neighbors, then we'll be, we'll be okay, and it'll be managed with our engineering design process. Dining has, has come up a lot as well, so we're really envisioning dining as a, as a restaurant or a lounge, a restaurant-like setting where, where residents can sit down and dine with each other, with their guests and their families, potentially. Third parties might provide these services on behalf of Ethos out of our property, so hiring an operator to actually work within the facility, within our kitchen. And the idea is to provide support for the, for the seniors that are living there as they age. Food at a lot of other facilities is done as a one-size-all-fits, or one-size-fits-all solution, and that really doesn't work for a lot of people. I mean, you envision the building, it's a, it's a building full of square pegs, so why try and fit them all in a round hole with a, with a one-size-fits-all meal plan? We want to have something that's scalable to be, to meet people's needs, that can support them as their care needs increase, as they, as they age in place at our facility. I just wanted to make one clarification earlier is that the, the kitchens within the suites, kitchens were provided within the suites from the earliest designs. I think that was in the 2021 proposal as well. And we view that as a way to give people a more intimate and rich experience, you know, when people want to have their, their families over for Thanksgiving or Christmas, that they're able to, they're able to provide that for their, for their families and guests. Moving on to traffic, so there was a recommendation by city staff that we look at traffic. We commissioned an updated study following the identical methodology to our '21 study. It showed about a 13% increase over the previous report. There's a question about us contributing to the, to the intersection improvements at Foster Thurston, Sandy Point Road, so we are doing that. It's a requirement of obtaining a building permit for us, $35,000. We're opening, open to increasing this contribution in line with the predicted traffic load if council would like to recommend that. It's not, not a big problem. Groundwater, so to, to the question earlier, a hydrogeological report was completed in 2021 as a recommendation of city staff. The neighborhood wells, according to the report, draw on a deep aquifer, many hundreds of feet under the ground, and this is from provincial well drilling reports. They are recharged from an aquifer that is far off the site to the east. There is a shallow aquifer on the site, or what's called a shallow aquifer groundwater that sits on top of the bedrock. That is not the aquifer that recharges the wells on the site. They're recharged to the east past Rockwood Park. I forget the exact location, but out that way. And I think the switch to surface parking really further reduces our risk of- We're opening, open to increasing this contribution in line with the predicted traffic load, if council would like to recommend that. Um, it's not, not a big problem. Groundwater, uh, so to, um, to the question earlier, um, a hydro geological report was completed in twenty-twenty-one as a recommendation of city staff. The neighborhood wells, according to the report, draw on a deep aquifer, uh, many hundreds of feet under the ground, and this is from provincial well drilling reports. They are recharged from an aquifer that is far off the site to the east. There is a shallow aquifer on the site, or what's called a shallow aquifer groundwater, that sits on top of the bedrock. That is not the aquifer that recharges the wells on the site. They're recharged to the east past Rockwood Park. Um, I forget the exact location, but, out that way. And I think the switch to surface parking really further reduces our risk of having any kind of contamination or issue with those wells on site, especially because of the reduced need for blasting. And to, and to clarify where the building's going, the building is not going up high, it's not going up on the ridge. The building is going down, down low on the plateau beneath the ridge. I think that, that was mentioned as well. Environmental permitting, uh, as Mr. Forsyth pointed out, we did do an ESA on our site, showed no major concerns. The province does not require an EIA for this, for this site. They did send us a note about the water courses, the potential water courses on the site. Uh, we will be undertaking whatever water course alteration permits are required to, to accommodate those, especially with regard to the parking that might encroach on that. Um, we want to make sure that we're, you know, respecting that and, and, uh, and creating as minimal impact as possible, uh, because Ethos is supposed to be a nature-based site. We're trying to, as much as possible, maintain the existing forest canopy and, and, uh, and have that for our, for our residents. The building itself, the thing we probably haven't talked about previously is that it's a, designed as a high-efficiency building, or it's being designed as a high-efficiency building. That'll include highly efficient mechanical systems, um, to, to provide heating, like a central heating system for the building, and a highly performant building envelope, uh, so that should reduce the amount of, uh, energy that's lost through the building envelope and the, uh, and the greenhouse gas impact of, of Ethos construct, sorry, Ethos construction. And we just had a couple of clarifications from, that came up during the P A C. Mentioned the communal dining space before, uh, the increased suite count came primarily from converting two-bedroom units to one-bedroom units. Uh, the building is smaller, as, as Scott mentioned earlier, it's actually a smaller square footage. We're sticking with our high-quality exterior finishes. Um, we did a drone study, um, back in twenty-twenty-one that looked, you know, attempted to look into neighbors' yards to see if there was any sightlines. Uh, it showed that there wasn't a significant sightline at the, at the higher balconies, uh, and that there actually was a little bit of one, which surprised us at, at the lower balconies, but I think we can, we can, uh, potentially mitigate that with a vegetative barrier hazards required by our, by our restrictions. There's a boat launch on the site that came up. Uh, the boat launch is not a boat launch, it should say canoe dock or water access. It's not intended as a boat launch. Um, and finally, we have a sanitary lift station, uh, that was originally slated to go very close to Pelton Road. Um, so that would have required service access off of Pelton Road. In the current imagining, um, it's, will be accessed off of the Sandy Point entrance, so we can potentially move that away from, from, uh, from Pelton entirely and not have to access the site through there at all, except for occasional maintenance of the electrical transformer. The position's not finalized, uh, I wouldn't want to restrict where that has to go right now, but, um, uh, we're hoping to get that, get that much further away. So, um, yeah, we have and always will continue to follow the required development protocols and permitting processes. And, uh, and hope that you consider our amendment to, uh, to the site suite count and to our sunset clause. Thanks very much.
Got a question for you. Counselor Red One, over to you for your question.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Mr. MacLeod, um, I'm not an engineer, so can you just let me know, like, what does deep aquifer mean? Is that the, how deep a well is?
A deep aquifer is a, is a body of water that's contained in the rock.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Deep in, deep in the hard rock that underlies the site.
I've had some concerns, because I know some of the residents' wells are only fifty feet deep. And, um, I think that's what Mr. Forsyth is kind of gearing towards, you know, there's a lot of challenges sometimes with water runoff and contamination into wells when they're not very deep. And some, I think some neighbors have much deeper wells. So what is really going to be done to mitigate for a fifty-foot-deep well, um, having any sort of contamination there?
Well, fir- first of all, uh, the insurance was mentioned earlier, so blasting insurance is carried by the, by the, any blasting contractors and digging contractors. So that insurance is in place, uh, or will be in place for our contractors.
Yeah.
Um, it's a primary thing, and the other, uh, the other area is in wastewater, or not wastewater. Wastewater is being pumped off the site. Uh, we have a sanitary connection to the city, um, so we're not installing any kind of septic that might contaminate the groundwater. And runoff from the parking lot is to be managed on the site and rooted off of the site. So that is, uh, and not impacting the neighbors. So that's a requirement that's imposed by the city in the permitting process.
Yeah, well, that makes sense.
Those are the primary mitigations right now.
That makes sense. I don't know how comfortable I feel with the insurance answer if it was my house, but, yeah.
I understand.
I think he's talking that the blasting company carries the insurance, right? Uh, Counselor Harris, over to you.
Yeah, it just, it feels like there's a misunderstanding on a couple of fronts, just around, uh, the concerns that the neighbors have. What you're, like, one of them, um, was brought up was around this need, I believe it was Mr. Forsyth brought up, need for environmental impact assessment. Now, you're saying the province clearly said to you, based on, and, and again, worth the civics lesson here to say, three-quarters of the concerns in this room that have come up so far are, are to do business plan and practices that are regulated already by the province, something that this table, and even for me, it's, sure, it's concerning and there's things, but it's not something that we can decide on as far as use of land. But around direction of water, it does sound like what you're saying is the water that's running off from this site is being directed away from the concerned properties, not into that. And that kind of came up to me when you said, "It's not as high up on the hill as is perceived." Is that kind of the sense here is?
Yeah, the, the site is, um, so you start on Sandy Point Road, you have a, up a field, and then you come down over the ridge onto a plateau, and the plateau is where the, is where the, uh, building is being built.
And so the direction of the runoff water, because I agree, there's a concern there around shallow wells, where is that heading toward?
Uh, heading towards the edge of the property and then being rooted, um, in the, you know, the current schematic drawings, in swales, uh, towards the, uh, towards the river.
So you're using bio swales on the way to rip the river for the runoff waters?
That, that's, that's the current plan, yeah. The, um, uh, detailed design stage will consider that fully. It'll, uh, it'll consider whether we need to add calverts, uh, or additional mitigation.
Okay.
That, that design has not been completed yet.
Sure.
It's part of our, part of our process in the future.
Right, and I know that is part of, you know, our, our building permits department, and they're going to be, they're going to be able to ensure that the work you're going to put in place does what you say it's going to do. I think there was another question around water, but I didn't write it down, so your worship, I might come back. Maybe I can get it through staff, but, um, anyway, that's all for now.
Thanks, I will do that. Counselor Hickey, over to you.
Uh, thank you very much, your worship. I appreciate the responses specific to water. I think there's, uh, still some concerns that exist there. I guess my question is more specific to permit timelines. It's been alluded to that there'd be a twenty-month construction period. What's the need for the extension to that seven years then, if you want to get started as quickly as possible?
Uh, we don't want to be compressed against the end of a sunset clause, uh, and come back to this process again in a few years and have to ask for an extension because of some unforeseen delay in securing our, our, uh, our construction loan, or an unforeseen delay in construction because of who knows what happens. We just don't want to be pushed up against the end of our, uh, sunset clause as we complete the building.
So then, what's the twenty-month commitment? Like, is, is that still exist?
The twenty-month construction timeline? Yeah, that's, that's the current estimate.
I, I'm just at a lot, like, if it's, if it's twenty months, that's a lot different than seven years.
Seven.
Or, sorry, five.
It's another five, yeah.
Yeah.
Not seven, because two are gone.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, sorry, for, for seven.
We're, we're asking for a total of seven, a total of seven years, not an additional seven years.
No, I know, I understand that, but fi- five is bigger than tw- like, twenty, I'm, I'm just, I'm just confused, because it's, it's, is that, it's a doubling of, of the, of the time that's committed to it. I'm just, I'm, I'm curious as to what, where the specifics on that need are.
Yeah, well, we, we got a, we got, uh, five years in the, in the first place, so that should be enough time for us to, uh, complete all of our studies on the site, including environmental studies or anything else we need to do, to fundraise, um, to construct the building, and to commission the building. And so we've lost two years of that for, um, reasons that were somewhat beyond our control, including like the increases in, uh, construction prices that Scott talked about, and interest rates, and economic forces, and, and so the additional, um, the additional two years or the extension to a full seven years is, just to cover off the, the two that we've been paused out of, out of, out of prudence and, and not wanting to start the project at a, at a inopportune time.
Okay, so, so the, so the understanding is that it would still be a commitment of those twenty months, there's just time on either, on, on the start of that that would be required, whether securing financing or whatever.
Sorry, I think I understood your question, yeah.
That's, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, we're still aiming for twenty-months construction.
So twenty months, but with some leeway on the other end, in case of disaster. Okay.
That's great.
Sounds good. Counselor Harris, over to you.
Yeah, I did have another question, your worship, and it might need Mr. Walton and you to kind of talk a second, but like, what can you get done in the next year, two years? Because this council table has had to deal with a lot of developers with pie in the sky ideas of what they're going to do, and then come back to us and never build. Uh, and until the province is able to kind of see reason and start decoupling that housing sector from private interests, and start taking ownership back of it for the public interest, we're kind of stuck with that. So these sunset clauses are really all we have in order to get the outcomes we're looking for. So I'm interested in the project for sure, but I'm also very concerned about what's happened to date, the holdups, not being built. So would you be open to some sort of stop-gating arrangement where if work gets done and there's checkmarks on the boxes, and that is what, um, opens up extra time on the end? Because I agree, we don't want to be revisiting this every two or three years, that's for sure. But I would love to know what you can actually get done in the next year and two years, so that we can do that coherently and, and reasonably, without putting, again, expectations where they shouldn't be.
Sure, well, first of all, the, the entire risk of, uh, extending the project lies on, lies on us. Um, if the project doesn't happen, then it, uh, remains a vacant space, the same as it's always been. So the risk, the risk of, uh, the risk of not developing the site lies with, lies with the developers. From what our construction, uh-
So does the profit though, because you turn around, you sell it, and you make a bunch of money on it, and we've seen that happens two or three times. And that doesn't serve the public interest either.
That's not our plan. We, we want to build-
Whether it's your plan or not, I have no guarantees. So I'm just wondering what you can get done.
What can we get done in the next couple of years?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so this year, uh, if we were, if, if we were fully funded today, um, we would go and we would begin the site clearing. We'd begin, uh, construction of the access road. We'd have to, of, of course, go through all the permitting process, we'd do our design development. The way that we want to build the building, uh, we'll be working on, uh, I don't want to give the exact numbers, because I don't work in construction, but you get the, the plans to, uh, mostly complete state, and then some of the earliest work can get done, um, and the, uh, the final plans adjust as you, kind of as you go. We'd want to get our foundations poured as quickly as possible, and then, you know, then start right into construction, so, uh, I mean, all goes well, we can, we can be substantially building the, the building in the next couple of years. I'm not sure if that's a satisfactory answer.
No, it's not, but that's, I get where you're in. You're in a predicament here, because you don't have all the money on the table yet, because you don't have some of this stuff added up yet. So that may need an ongoing conversation with staff to be able to iron out. We'll talk about that.
We don't have the stuff added up yet. Sorry, I just want to clarify.
Sorry, what?
What, what did you mean by, "We don't have the stuff added up yet"?
Well, until these plans are approved, it's hard for you to go and get financing approved. Right? So until this is done, or if it doesn't happen, you're back to the drawing room.
Yes, I understand what you're saying, yeah. Um, well, we, we secure our funding, the funding that we secure, uh, pays for the design development stage, or the detailed design stage.
Yeah.
So, uh, there's no other questions here for you right now, but I have, sir, what have you been, what's been happening in the last couple of years that we've had this hiatus? Anything with the project?
Scott, if I miss anything, then speak up. But, uh, pri- primarily what's been happening, we've been, uh, doing a lot of relationship building, uh, fundraising. We've been revising our plans. Uh, each, each plan iteration takes, you know, takes some time. Uh, we've been recosting the project. Recosting takes, uh, several months every time, every time that we look at it. It's the des- design iteration process.
Right, yes.
Yeah, and responding to, uh, responding to changes in, uh, in the economic environment as, as we go. Did you want to add to that?
Just adding on to that, um, so, we did raise all the equity we require for the project to unlock the construction loan. We have a term sheet for the construction financing. It's obviously gated by this approval, um, to move forward. And, uh, as Ian mentioned, we worked with, uh, two different cost estimators, um, plus the estimation team of our, our builder, and revised the designs at each iteration when prices were rising.
Okay, thank you. All right, we don't see, I don't see any more questions here. So, um, I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application. I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application. And I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the application. Okay, so I am going to close the public hearing, and I will ask my team. Oh, wait, now I got a time here. Who's looking for something? You have a question? Okay. Oh, okay, so you want a break? What, after all this excitement? All right, I guess we're going to take a five-minute recess. So why do I need to make a motion for a recess? I got one from Counselor Stewart and Counselor Harris, or Counselor Hill Hickey on the question, all in favor? Okay, five-minute recess. Who's yakking? Oh. Oh. Okay, I thought I could hear Barry on that. Well, that was, that, I didn't know who was talking about. Okay, can I call the meeting back to order, please? Oh, my God. Hello? Oh, where's my gavel? It's in the other room. Okay, do I need a motion, city clerk?
You can call the meeting back.
I'm calling the meeting back to order, so I guess that's good. Okay, so the next step, for starters, we've all had a little chance to chat, but what we, all of us are going to consider is only what we've heard in the public hearing, that's fair ball. But now I'm going to ask my team if they have any questions for Mr. Reed. And I have, is Mr. Reed here? Oh, there he is. All right, you're in the hot seat next. Counselor Sullivan is the first person up.
Thank you, your worship. Through you to staff, I have two questions again, I'll just throw them out and let them have at them. We've talked a lot about stormwater runoff, and I'm very used to deferring to stormwater mitigation bylaw that's somewhere else, especially given the current climate concerns with our neighbors in Nova Scotia, maybe we could have a refresher as to standards and kind of what that is about. And the second, well, actually, I'll let you have at that one first and give you the second one.
Okay. Well, I guess if there's a, your worship, through you to the counselor, I guess if he had a second question that was more applicable to planning, if you could ask that first because I've got my colleague here from infrastructure development that's well-versed in stormwater, probably a bit better than myself to answer.
Perfect. I don't know if this one's going to be any better for you. Also, some concerns in the community about the definitions, and I think what's most in my mind is still a supportive facility, but it certainly would lend itself with a larger parking lot to be an apartment building. So what's the protection, I guess, for the community that this stays on track as a supportive facility?
Okay. Your worship, through you to the counselor, there's a couple of things, I guess, you know, if they do get their approvals tonight, their next entry point at the city would be a building permit process. So city staff, infrastructure, planning, and building inspection review that building permit. So that's essentially the first check, if you will, that, you know, does it substantially meet the plans and is it reasonable that this is a supportive facility, being definition B of that supportive facility major, being essentially a housing devoted to senior residents providing amenities. So that's the first check. Does that match what has been provided in the plans with the application? And then through the construction process, the building inspectors and sometimes the planners do go out to ensure that what is approved by us at the building permit stage gets constructed in the field. And then there's the third, there's the third stage, which is the enforcement process. So once it gets built and occupied, you know, if someone were to have suspicion that this no longer meets the definition of a supportive facility major, they would call the city and then we would investigate, and if it doesn't meet that, then we would begin enforcement action. And that would involve our building inspection folks and legal staff. One of the effective tools we have these days is basically registering violations on title. So what that tends to do is we place the violation notices registered on title with Service New Brunswick. So, for example, if the owner was looking to remortgage the property and a lawyer was doing a title search, all of a sudden there's a violation notice. The banks and financial institutions tend to get a bit reluctant to loan money in our experience if there is a violation notice there. So it's an effective tool that we have to bring folks on a path towards compliance.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll turn it over to my colleague, Joel Landers, with respect to the stormwater question.
Thanks, Mr. Reed.
Through your worship to the counselor, so we have a drainage bylaw which has also the storm drainage criteria manual. And part of that is that the post-development, one and five-year and one and 100-year flows need to match the pre-development flows, so the existing flows off-site. So they'll likely have to provide some sort of stormwater detention facility or other methods to make sure that the flow leaving the site is less than or equal to what's there now.
So it does, it does refer to the one and 100-year flows? Because unfortunately, we're seeing more of those.
Yes, it does, both the one and five and the one and 100.
So that's the standard?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, that is developed by the proponents' engineer. It's sealed by them and then reviewed by city staff.
All right, thank you. I have Counselor Redd one with a question next.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to Mr. Reed. I'm just, I'm wondering a couple of questions, I have a couple of questions for you. Where do you think people are going to park with this facility? Because I mean, with 122 units and the bus stops at University Avenue now, just as July 1st, I mean, that wasn't the case probably while you were planning, but now it's not going further. So how are people going to commute?
Your worship, through you to the counselor, the parking requirement for a supportive facility is one space per three residences, three residents in the facility. So based on the 122 spaces, that would give them, you know, if you had 167 units within the facility, say if you had one person per unit and if you only needed a third of a space per unit, that would get you around, just pardon, I can't do the math on short demand, but, you know, that would get you somewhere between 50 and 60 spaces with one person per unit. So if you had two, that would get you between 100 and 120. Now, typically, you know, these facilities that, you know, provide accommodation for seniors, not everyone has a car. You know, there could be, there could be residents there that, you know, while they're seniors, still have their license, but there could be others that, you know, have given it up for medical reasons or choose not to drive anymore.
Yeah, but they are saying that they're looking for active seniors, so that's why I'm kind of worried about that. The other thing that I'm wondering, in the staff report, it said 133 units is what was proposed, but it was actually 125. Why is that?
I can't speak to the original report, the 125 versus 133. I know the Section 59 agreement that was crafted following the first application did reference, I believe it was 133 versus 125.
Yeah, so I brought up the previous staff report, it was 125, just so you know. So that's the difference of 42 units, just for, you know, council's info, basically. So then, the other thing that I'm wondering is if there's not 10 or more residents getting 24/7 care, and if they don't have communal dining, how is this a major community's facility and not, and I'll get specific, general commercial?
On that one, the definition of communal dining means people eating together. It doesn't mean that dining is included in your rent. It means it's a large dining room where people eat together. Based on the plans that were submitted with the original application and the current application, there is a large dining room that I think Mr. Walton or Mr. McLeod said here tonight would accommodate 90 residences, and they would basically, you know, eat in shifts as many other facilities do.
Is that in Plan SJ?
No, that isn't, we don't define communal planning, or communal dining, rather, in the zoning bylaw. We only define the use of supportive facility.
Okay, so, I mean, for me, it's shared by all members of the community, and if there's a fee associated, it might not allow, communal means shared by everybody, I mean, not just a common amenity. To me, that's a common amenity, like in a hotel or a luxury apartment building. So that's where I'm having a hard time with this because I almost, like, I mean, I know what we're supposed to be looking at, but I feel like I'm being asked to vote on something that's not even the right zoning. I'm stuck on it. Anyway, thank you. I mean, you've answered my questions, thank you.
Mr. Reed, maybe, I don't know if you have the definition there, the actual definition, which is in your kit, proposed, which would be considered as a supportive facility major under the zoning bylaw, which is our own zoning bylaw, which we use. I don't know if you have that, you want to read that?
Your worship, I do have it here, I can just open it up to the right page, or if you have it there, it might be. I have it right here.
Do you have it? Okay.
So supportive facility major in the zoning bylaw is defined as the following. A, so there's two things it can be. A, an establishment licensed or approved by a government agency that provides care and/or supervision to 10 or more residents on a 24-hour basis for, by professional staff, or, case B, which is, you know, what we are discussing here tonight, an establishment devoted to retired residences, residents where common amenities and services, including communal dining, are provided exclusively for such, to such senior residents.
Okay, that's helpful to have.
So it would be the second case, case B.
Right, okay. And that's our own, our own description of that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, your worship. Just picking up on what you just said, Mark. So if I, if I wanted to try to stay under this particular zoning, right, I would have to abide by what you just said and provide communal dining to meet that clause, correct?
Yeah, you would have to provide a dining room and then rent exclusively to seniors, I believe is the definition.
Seniors?
Yeah.
Would I have to provide that food and that amenity as part of the rent, or would I be allowed to charge additional for that amenity?
We don't regulate how that's provided, if it's the, you know, à la carte model that the proponents are staying, or if it's, you know, an all-inclusive meal plan. We don't regulate that. Our definition would be communal dining, if there's a room on those plans where the food service is provided in a common area for folks to eat at tables.
So that really opens the door to a lot of possibilities. Anyway.
Would you like the Commissioner to speak to that? It's just that the zoning is already set, we've got the zoning, it's not in question tonight. So maybe Commissioner Hamilton, did you want to say a few words on this?
Will I get to finish after?
Absolutely.
Yes, your worship, through you to the deputy mayor. As was indicated, the notion of a supportive facility was part of the original conditions of development, and it is the use that's permitted in the community facility zone and designation. So that's, there's no deviating from that. That is an absolute must-have for the development. And really, what we are focusing on here this evening is those aspects of the changes to the development proposal, the three indicated changes that were highlighted earlier in the presentation. So the change regarding the parking, the change regarding the number of units, and the third thing, I just lost track of. Mark, remind me of the third aspect.
The sunset clause.
The sunset clause, yes. Yeah, so it's those three conditions of the development. And there are other conditions in place that have been put in place through Section 59 conditions, agreements, and Section 131 agreements from the previous approval that safeguard many aspects of this project, you know, that address many facets that were previously debated by council back in 2021. So those will continue to stand, and these are additional considerations that are before you this evening with respect to the Section 59 amendment process.
Thank you. Back to you, deputy.
Thank you, your worship. Okay, so let's stick with the five-year sunset clause. Can you tell me of a situation in St. John where we have extended a five-year cap on a project, two years into a project, without a shovel being listed?
I'm not aware of any cases where that has occurred.
Would that be something that we would be expected to support if it was brought forward, that there's a project, nothing happening, but they want to extend it?
Your worship, through you to the counselor, you know, I think a lot of folks have, you know, raised the point here tonight that, you know, nothing has been advanced, there's no shovels on the ground. But I think one of the things that we've alluded to in the staff report is, you know, even though construction's not occurring, the developer's still moving ahead. This is a fairly large project, there's design and costing that has to go into this. They've refined costing and they've refined design within those two years since approval. So they have spent some money. I, you know, I was, before coming to the city, I was. I, you know, I was, before coming to the city, I was 12 years in consulting and consultants don't work for free.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Harris, over to you.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's tricky, this one, because, you know, I can appreciate, your worship, where the neighbors are at here. But I think it is, it does hinge on this idea that, you know, when, when you go to court, a judge isn't looking at the past case, they're looking at the current case. And in this case, Ethos Ridge has already been approved. And that's not up for debate tonight as far as this building being constructed overall, nor is the design of the box, as much as we may have opinions about that. I agree, I want to see some movement on some of this. I want to see a reason to give the sunset clause an extension, not just say, well, you say you need it, so here it is. So I have two questions. One with regard to the part, the, the difference between the PAC recommendation and the staff recommendation. I would love to kind of get a bit of a breakdown on that because I'm getting a little bit lost in this as far as trying to flip back and forth to figure out what are the discrepancies between what PAC decided or recommends and what staff does. And then the other one is, can we have a conversation about gating, the, gating the sunset's clause extension? To say, council will approve a sunset clause extension if A, B, and C happen in this timeline? Because that has to be the example we come out of this, I think, going forward for the city, is that you gotta, you gotta see, you have to see work done in progress on these projects that are huge projects, and we've got a number of them that are waiting. So, yeah, if we can start with the PAC recommendation and staff recommendation differences, that'd be great.
Sure. I guess the recommendation that came from PAC in the approval letter, there were, I guess, one component added to the original staff recommendation and that was a cap on the parking lot, capping it at 122 spaces.
A parking maximum.
Parking maximum, yeah. There was also a minor amendment. We staff had originally recommended that we have an additional Section 59 agreement requiring an additional traffic study. There were some minor tweaks to that clause to say that, you know, the work that goes into that traffic study be at a scope approved by city staff. So that was kind of a minor recommendation.
That was a staff recommendation, addition, not PAC?
Yeah, that was, that was a bit of an addition there that staff brought up. Now, where we landed in terms of what was provided for, to council tonight in the council report, supplemental report, it did have the traffic study recommendation as coming out of PAC with the scope to be determined by the city. But it did not have the cap of 122 spaces because the more we've looked at it, we don't want to come back here again, you know, in five years' time if they need more parking spaces and they're capped at 122, given that we currently have checks and balances in place through the development permit process and the stormwater submission that would examine any increases to that parking lot at the staff level.
What you're saying is, so, your worship, I know I'm overtime.
No, it's good, go ahead.
Just so I can understand here. So what you're saying is, although there's reason to put a limit on parking so we don't just turn into a huge problem here, right? Obviously, we want to put some guardrails on this thing. But if they build 122 for now and need 100, you know, an extra 40 down the road, you want to build in that flexibility so that we're not doing this again. Is that what I'm understanding? Or are you saying just let them park, put however many spaces? Is the staff recommendation that they can just put however many spaces in that they need?
Your worship, through you to the counselor. The, the recommendation would be however many spaces they need to meet their demand and we would approve that through the development permit and stormwater. The main concern that came out at PAC was you increase the parking lot, there's more stormwater runoff from the site. So how do, you know, how do we manage that impact through a stormwater plan?
Okay, so then, I see.
Yeah.
They can't go past that number without going through the permitting process, which triggers a review to say, okay, you want an extra 40 spaces? What's the water doing? Where's it going? You know, who's responsible for it, all that? Okay, I get it. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager, did you want to comment on the incremental? If that was a possibility of the sunset clause?
In terms of that, it's something staff could take away and look at and we could come back at a subsequent meeting with some recommendations. Just wouldn't want to do it here on the fly. We'd want to take it away and think about it and report back. But definitely something we can undertake if that's a will of council.
Counselor Redd, one, over to you.
Through you to Mr. Reed. In, in light of us looking at change to the site development concept, I'm just wondering, have you ever had a plan come to you for a senior facility with five or less staff? Just in your experience, I mean, we don't have that many senior facilities.
Your worship, your worship, through you to the counselor. I haven't had any plans come across my desk for a seniors' facility.
Ever?
No, they've typically been commercial and then larger residential and industrial developments. I think the, I may have had some involvement in the Shanex early on, but that's, that's a bit of a different model in that it's a mix of a continuum of care from an active resident through to nursing home, through to dementia care and end-of-life care. So it's, it's a bit of a different business model.
Yeah, they have a lot of staff. Thank you.
Commissioner Hamilton, did you want to contribute to that at all? I don't know where you've been, if you have any experience.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I guess the, the models around seniors' care are evolving and certainly that was part of the discussion that would have been back during the previous 2021 approval. I guess what I would say to council on this point is that, again, that, that issue of how they deliver that service is not fundamentally a land use consideration. So it's not something we would look at typically as part of review of proposals.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, that looks like that's it for questions for you, Mr. Reed. Appreciate your input. Okay. Team, what are we doing here? I'm going to need a proposal, a motion. I'm going to need something along the lines here. Counselor Sullivan?
I guess a question through you to staff. I don't want to vote in favor of the recommendation. So what would be the recommended motion to just deny the changes? Said I to you, through you to the city clerk?
That's correct. Council could do one of two things. If somebody were to put forward the motion that's in the staff report, you could vote against it or you could vote to deny this request.
Okay, sorry. Next up is.
Yeah, actually, I'll, we'll see where it goes. I'll move that the request be denied. And if I get a second or I'll speak to it. And, and I guess, to reason, and very cognizant that the two pieces in front of me are the sunset clause and the change in design. Going back to 2021, I did vote in favor of everything back then. But I, I also explained that, you know, we have the obligation to vote yes or no. It doesn't mean we're 100% yes or 100% no. And in 2021, really, it was the, the design at the time and the level of quality I saw in that facility that tipped me to the 51 whatever percent yes. And the change in design, especially the parking lot, and, and I know we've got, the engineer did a great job of explaining the stormwater runoff mitigation, but I, I can't help but think the size of the parking lot that's there, even with active seniors, it's not, my opinion, it's not going to be big enough at, at that and you're looking at 50% larger. And I don't think we have a good handle on what a 100-year storm is anymore. And boy, I can't help but think where all that runoff's going to go. Yeah, and so I think the quality of the design, I certainly understand and accept the, the explanation with regards to the economic changing, changes. You know, I, I certainly accept that, but the design that we have in front of us tonight, sorry, doesn't inspire me. And the sunset clause, you know, even if this was to go forward tonight, you know, I, I kind of agree with what Counselor Harris has been suggesting. I, I think if a project has been moving along and moving towards the vision that's there, I, I don't think a council would not say at that point in time, no, keep it rolling. It's going. But I, I don't know, I don't know if at this, this point in time, I am willing to give this project another two years until I were to see something more. So those are the two things we have in front of us and I'm really not satisfied with either.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go over to general counsel next.
Thank you, your worship. I just, if it helps council, I just want to remind members of council that they're not obligated to make a decision this evening. I see some, if there is hesitation and council wants to ponder and possibly send something back to staff to amend the recommendation somehow, if that would be easy, easier for you to make a decision. I just wanted to point out that you don't need to make your decision this evening.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Redd, one?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to comment on how my decision's going. So, I mean, I think that, you know, it's really easy to look at the previous proposal and see the change to the site looks completely different, which, I mean, I understand, like Counselor Sullivan said, the rationale behind, you know, change in finances and things like that situations happen. But I really do worry about the parking because where are people going to park? If they're active seniors, any active senior I know has a vehicle. And so if that's the case, I mean, you're going to end up with a great big parking lot. Yes, there's drainage bylaws and all that sort of thing. But, you know, there's a lot of water flowing down there anyway and it's right up on the hill. Like, I, I went out there, it was incredible how, you know, I mean, I know it's kind of going up and then coming down, but still, it's way up on a hill. So I worry about water runoff. But the, the other thing is, is when you're, when you're talking about increasing from 133 units is what was said to us to 167, it's actually 125 to 167. First made me, that was a first, like, bell that went off that made me uncomfortable because it is 42 units is like another apartment building, right? The other thing is, is like, I'm just, I am worried about the project and the sunset clause because nothing has really happened since last council was debating this online. And so anyway, I just, I don't see this going forward. Well, the other thing is, I'm wondering if something happens that council would pass this, is there any way to put a clause there so that commercial vehicles could not, like, to put a sign out that commercial vehicles could not park on Pelton Road because it would be extremely dangerous. It's very narrow road. So I don't know. Anyway, I was just going to leave that out there. I don't know if something that needs to be answered later, but those are just my thoughts.
Mr. Hugenholz, can I call on you for that one? When I heard that, I got the impression that would be no different than when those heavy vehicles end up over the city streets and the commissioner gives permission for that one vehicle. But I may be wrong about that.
Through you, your worship, to the counselor. Yeah, in terms of restricting on-street parking, we do have provisions of the traffic bylaw. So we have used that in other occasions. It is a rather blunt tool. We can't target it to one vehicle type or another, or one property or another. It would apply to the street or the section of the street and everybody would be caught by that, the residents that live there, this development. So it is a blunt tool, but it is something that we have in our toolbox.
But what about the extra heavy vehicle that was, that goes over? Was that not it?
Yeah, there, there, I know there were some concerns raised about, you know, activities during the construction phase and what vehicles could drive where. There are provisions in the bylaw that say that any construction-related activities have to take the truck route and then the nearest route between the truck route and the construction site. So that, that would sort of restrict some of the other options. There is a provision in there for exceptions based on the commissioner's discretion, but I'm not sure that I've heard anything this evening or in the reports that would warrant an exception like that.
Okay, so it, it's, that's there for the exception then?
Yes, that's correct.
It wouldn't be overruled, like, permanently, but for the exception? Okay. Thank you. Deputy, over to you.
Thank you, your worship. These, I mean, these decisions are not easy to make. And the last time in 2021, I agree with Counselor Sullivan. You know, I wasn't 100% in favor of it. I thought it was a beautiful project in a beautiful area that was going to service beautiful people in the future. And I still think that that concept, that building, that facility in that setting would be a wonderful thing. I'm not in favor of extending the sunset clause. We have it there for a reason. Unless, unless there's some work being done and you can actually see it, I'm not really there yet to, to extend something that hasn't started. I'm not at all happy about the change in the parking. There was never a vision to have an acre parking lot in the middle of that community, in my books. It was all underground, out of sight, and it was good for the tenants that were there. They didn't have to deal with snow. I'm still in favor of the project as originally planned, you know? I may not be at the 60%, I might be a little lower than that now, but I'm not in favor of these changes. So I can't support this. Thank you, your worship.
Counselor Killen?
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to join this, the nay crew, and I always want to make sure I say why as a result of that. I remember watching this. I wasn't on council yet, but I remember watching this and I'm sure a lot of you were here for that decision. And I don't think I would have ever supported this, to be put in the forest and to isolate people in this particular way. I think that we need to live in closer communities, especially when it comes to seniors and active seniors. So with the parking lot addition, with the, the sunset clause extension, I just can't imagine. I mean, it would be great if the original project was able to go through because it did look, you know, very beautiful. But I still, in principle, can't support this for a land use perspective or, you know, just in general. So, thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion and I don't know if we want to, if you want me to call the question on that motion? All right. I'm going to call the question on the motion. All in favor to deny the change? It's to deny the changes, I believe? Counselor Sullivan? Call the question, to deny the changes, call the question, all in favor? Against? One, two, two against with Counselor Harrison, Counselor Hickey. So the application fails? I guess, is that the, okay? All right. Yes, let's do that. We're going to just let everyone exit before we continue with the, with the, with the meeting. We're going to just let everyone exit before we continue with the meeting. Okay, City Clerk, what's next?
Let's get our next presentation on the road here. Please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Next on the agenda is item 8.2, and that's a presentation from the Fundy Regional Service Commission. And I know that we have the CAO Phil Mallett here today.
Thank you, you two, for your patience and for being here tonight. I very, very much appreciate it.
That's what teaching school for 32 years does. It gives you a lot of patience. Mayor Reardon and counselors, thank you very much for inviting the Fundy Regional Service Commission here this evening. We're very excited to present with to you our regional strategy. And never before has the region come together as it has over the past few years to develop and to create a region that moves together and will create a forum for development in our area. When the Fundy Regional Service Board established its work plan back in 2023, the entire board, regardless of how frustrated we were, and there were times when I was pretty frustrated with the local governance reform, but we were committed to making the best of this new reality. We were committed to building trust across the region, and we are working together to maximize the impact that the expanded Fundy Region Service Commission has been given. The vision the board had back, right now, in 2023, and the work plan holds true as part of the draft regional strategy, and it is a draft. And I thank Fundy Regional Services Commission, the board, the committees that many of you serve on, and the community partners and stakeholders, and also elected officials and our staff members for all the work that you have done to bring this to where we are today. And we also have seven member communities, and we have worked hard together. And your representative on this commission is Deputy Mayor John McKenzie, and John knows the work that has gone into this. Your mayor has attended several of the meetings, and she knows the work that has gone into this. So I always say, you know, when we plan our work and then we work our plan, and that's what you have with the Fundy Regional Service Commission. We have a plan now, and it's going to move us forward. And it's a very important plan because we can be the poster child for the entire province. And I think that we are headed in that direction. We have our CEO, Phil Mallett, whom many of you are familiar with. And he told me not to talk too long. He said he's got a strategy to present to you, a regional strategy to present. And, you know, when we have open minds and we are able to move forward, this is something that has brought the seven communities together. And we are doing this because we know it's the right thing to do. We are doing it because we all believe in this. And I see Mayor Reardon nodding her head because we know that together we're stronger. So I'm going to ask Phil to come out now.
Thank you, Chair O'Hara, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for having the commission here this evening. I will jump through some slides here. Just the general feedback on the strategy. When you look at it, there's a lot of actions, there's a lot of things to work through. But the theme here is that the province implemented these new requirements, new legislation that says that the Regional Service Commission shall, all this stuff. What we did is we decided to go out and talk to partners across the region, a bunch of them. And we asked them, what do they want to do? What's the story here? And the story is, is that they believe there should be regional collaboration. It's not a big decision for these partners to say. While each local government lives in the bubble of their local government and the work of their local government, and that's important, it's very important stuff. The stakeholders and the partners are telling us, get going, work together, make this more efficient, find new ways of providing new value. So while this is a mandate from the province, and it's great to say the province gave us this mandate, now we're forced to do it. That's been the theme for the last year. We now have a new source of information, which is those who have provided input into the strategy who are telling us, not the province, go on, do it, proceed. So now you've got a board of the FRSC, you've got the province, and you've got stakeholders across the region saying, this is something we should pursue. So I am not going to go through 77 actions today. I'm going to do the best that I can within the time allotment before the clerk tells me that I'm out of time. I'm not going to review the vision, but of course, this strategy, what's unique about it, and you may say that we've shot ourselves in the foot, is this is a strategic plan. That should be at the vision and the goal level. But we didn't do that. We decided to include 77 actions. And the reason for that is that we wanted to see where the rubber hits the road. We want to share that with council members, with the community, and say, this is how it should feel and look. Most comments we receive are about the action, so we've invited that, and that's our own fault. We've done that to ourselves, but it was intentional for that reason. And I also want to acknowledge that the counselors are an important stakeholder. We know that we've improved as the commission communication with the CAOs across the region, as well as the members of our board, who were frustrated last year. There are still a lot of stakeholders that we need to improve that communications, and one of them is council members. When I visit each one of the councils, you can tell that they're not as aware of what's going on with the commission. They have a lot of questions. They're still at the initial phases of understanding how this can be valuable. So we need to improve upon that. But that's why we've decided to take a month before we seek formal adoption of this strategy with the board and go to each one of the local government councils and the rural district councils across the region to collect that feedback and make sure that there's awareness of what's happening and what direction we're taking. So these are the values that we have. Again, not going to review it. One of the comments that we've received a lot is, well, you've got 77 actions, and a bunch of them are to study and partner and introduce initial steps. And that is definitely fair. And I'll tell you why we do that, why we've decided to do that, is that a lot of these are brand new. Last year, we were a landfill and a local planning service. This year, we've got a whole lot more on our plates. And for us to come out and say, well, I'll tell you how we should deal with poverty. I'm going to tell you five things that we're going to do in the next two years, and we're going to tackle it. We're not there. We don't have that expertise, that collective ownership of the community towards that. So what does a cautious, prudent, and well-thoughtful approach do is you study. You talk to the community. You develop more strategic action plans, and that's exactly what we intend to do. I would rather do that than step on toes and be told as an organization that's seeking to take over or to prevent progress from other organizations. Okay, so I'm going to go through very quickly the different categories of the strategy, and I'm going to highlight a couple key areas that we're doing. So regional public safety, you have the vision and the goals there, three different goals. Here are two samples of actions that have been identified. One of them is to identify Train Safety and Traffic and Safety Committee in the region. The one thing that unites this region so well is trains. Everybody's talking about trains, and it's an easy thing for us to get along on because we're all a little bit worried about it, all a little excited about it. So this is a great opportunity for the region to come together and say, what do we need to know about these trains? What do we need to do to prevent the challenges that are brought from this increased train traffic? And what best practices do we already know of that can be shared with other communities? I'm not going to go through the next one. There's a whole bunch more on it. We can take questions on this. Regional transportation, there are five different goals in this area. One, two particular items here is every community in our region does a shares the road, active transportation-type initiative every year. And they all look very similar, have similar themes. But what if the commission were to help out with that? What if we were able to develop a template that everybody could use, save everybody a little bit of money, and still deliver that same customized approach that each community wanted? If that works, let's proceed. The other one is a regional transportation master plan. And I want to confirm this because I think there is a belief that the Regional Service Commission is going to come and tell local governments how to do their business. That is not the case. When we talk about a regional transportation master plan, we're talking about using all the data across the region to develop a regional strategy, while each local government can create their own. If there's one local government in our region that doesn't have it, it is not our mandate to do the local government work for them. We do not have a mandate to do the job of a local government. We have the mandate when all parties agree that this is a good idea to achieve the success that we have or to pursue the projects that we have. So in this case, we would not, if there's one community that doesn't have a transportation master plan at the local level, we would not be accessing our members across the region to pay for that one community. We would only be doing it under the lens of a regional strategy, so not completing those local detailed plans. Land use planning, it is part of our strategy. There is an opportunity for us to bring new value. There is feedback already from several communities across the region that there is an opportunity here to collaborate further on land use planning and building inspection and enforcement services. Community development is one of our broadest areas. Last time, we were before council, we certainly shared that, and there's continued interest in what does 2024 bring. Some of the actions that we've identified here, the more immediate ones, is a regional asset map. There has been quite a bit of work done within some communities, including St. John, on asset mapping around some of the categories of community development. But as it relates to those services across the region, we don't have a lot of information on that, and we don't know how those services in St. John spread across the region. So there's some more work to be done there, expansion of the existing work that's already been done. So there's a little bit of work. This next one is probably more of a visionary-type thing about where could we become, where could we move to as a commission to support this area? And one of the areas that we thought, that we've received feedback and we thought could be a great action is to develop an annual symposium amongst the various stakeholders across the region, monitor our progress, set targets as a region, celebrate our successes, bring in innovation, and across all these sectors so that we're building on a community development area that everybody's benefiting from and helping those communities that may be a little further behind come up, bring them up to speed. Regional facilities, we just finished two days. We stole many hours of time from your CAO on this one, but we got a lot of good feedback on recommendations for the regional facilities. There are four actions in here. One of the big ones that ours in here is that we do want to investigate the governance structure of each one of the five regional facilities and how we might identify some efficiencies there, as well as how they work together. I think there's also an opportunity more immediately to develop a regional arts and culture policy. This was identified through the consultation. Every community does arts and culture in their own way, but how can we work together to develop an arts and culture policy and programming that brings linkages across the region? Economic development, we've got a big image on that one. This one is already adopted. We already have a regional economic development and tourism strategic plan and KPIs through Envision St. John. So I'm not going to take too much time, but I do love that photo, and it is coming, Moonlight Bazaar. Solid waste is another area. Again, there are some actions in our action plan and our strategy pointing to solid waste. There's a lot of things on the horizon for solid waste. So we want to wait till there, until that moment, including the circular materials, new regulations federally. We also have a HITEA currently in process, so there's a lot before we get into action. We also have an administrative and governance section, as well as a scorecard to monitor our progress. And back to the actions, at the end of the strategy, we outline all the 77 actions and when we intend to take them each year, year over year. So you can see this incremental approach to the implementation of the strategy. So you are the last council for this around-the-region discussion. We've done all the other councils, and you are the last ones. We have collected great feedback since we first introduced this on June 22. And we intend to submit an updated version. We know there will be adjustments on August 3 to the board. And we are here today to answer any questions or any feedback that you might have, so we really appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Phil. I thought it was great. And Mayor O'Hara, appreciate you coming as well. I thought the strategy was great, read through it all there. A lot of the initiatives in there, of course, you know, as a bigger city, St. John's been working on a lot of those things. But it's great now to work in the partnership and to have all of us together on it. I think, you know, we can be, as you say in your report, we can be, you know, more successful. We can be more resilient, you know, and more sustainable, all those things, which is what we're really striving for. So I've got a few either questions or comments for you from my team. Counselor Harris, over to you first.
Thanks. Thank you, Your Worship, through you to Phil. Good to see you again. Thanks for the presentation. There really is only one question I have because so much of this is experimental that we're seeing this downloading of authorities and responsibilities to our Regional Service Commission. And you guys haven't had a chance to take a crack at it yet, so I can appreciate that. But when it comes to issues around housing, when it comes to issues around transportation, especially around community development, which is more my hat than I wear outside of here, but even in here sometimes, that one is like, it's important, I guess, that I understand what it is you are doing to address the equity lensing that needs to occur. I don't necessarily mean equity from a diversity perspective, because that's important. But I mean, like, not each community has an equitable share of the problem. And so how do we make sure that the communities that have a disproportionate amount of the problem, let's say around the community development or housing or whatever, get that, I guess, that top-tier response, right? Because, like I said, I get it, there's a lot of experimenting to do here, and there's a lot of great actions in there. But I guess how this happened, like how we have that lens figured out will determine where we put these things, where the initiatives get focused, and what becomes the template to try to replicate. I don't know if that's something you have gotten to yet in this process, because, you know, but I'd just be curious if that is something you've talked about.
Yeah. I'll answer it in two ways. First, on downloading. I've heard this word downloading a couple times, and I think it's worth a quick comment on. There's some belief that the province was doing work, and they've downloaded it. They've downloaded expenditures they had provincially, and they've given it to these regional service commissions, and they're expecting local governments to do it. I don't have a lot of evidence of that. I've heard that before. But, you know, stuff like community development coordination around community development, nobody's doing it. The province isn't doing it. Nobody's doing it. It's new. You know, regional public safety, bringing all the public safety actors. There's 35 different partners in the region around public safety. The province wasn't doing that. They don't have a budget line for that. Nobody was doing it. So, but there could be. There could be. I haven't investigated every rock. But I hear downloading, and I hear, what I hear is that the province has given us new responsibilities, whether they were done by the province or not before. Just the Fundy Regional Service Commission did not have the responsibility of community development. Did you ask for it? Probably not, but it's done. So if we call that downloading, let's accept that that's downloading. In terms of your comment about the disproportional, I think that each community faces challenges in a different way. And I think that each community has taken action in different ways, too. And as the largest community in the Fundy region, I think the entire region has a lot to learn from the city of St. John on how it's captured some of the challenges that it's faced. Are all those challenges the same across the region? They're not. They're not at all. They're not at all. And I think we'll find the greatest amount of success in identifying themes that everybody can initially say, yes, this is happening in my community, I feel that this is something we need to work together on. The ones that have disproportionate themes in one community versus the other, I think are going to be simply just harder to tackle, and we've shared that with the province, that that's a challenge with the structure. But in turn, I don't think it should be an excuse not to try. You know, just because it's difficult, it should not be an excuse to say, well, then regional collaboration can't work, because we're bigger, they're smaller, we're more advanced here, we're not more advanced there. I don't think that should be an excuse, and I'm not claiming you're saying that it's an excuse, but I think there is enough problems to bring the decision makers in the region together. And what I've heard, frankly, is this, a lot of the partners we've consulted, it says, okay, so there's a magical board out there that has all the mayors or representatives of each community under one body, and you're dealing with all these new topics, and you can just go to this body and work through them instead of doing seven presentations? Sounds efficient. Sounds right up my alley. So I think there's interest here, because it's going to be more efficient. These recommendations that are coming forward are being brought to each one of the mayors who have, who are expected to deliver in these areas. So I think there's a real opportunity ahead of us tackling some of these challenges more than ever before.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Redwin?
Mayor, thank you, Phil, for your presentation. You know, I love the idea of collaborating regionally. I think it's wonderful. I do look at this, though, and I think, okay, there's affordable housing in there, health communities, to me, that is provincial. So I guess that one of my concerns is if that is coming onto municipalities, how much money is coming along with it? I think in order to be successful, there has to be that pocket of cash to go along with it, right, to make sure that your actions are carried forward. There's lots of actions, and I don't think that you have it costed out yet, but I'm sure it's probably quite substantial. One of the concerns that I had when I looked at this was in your community development committee, I don't see an immigrant there. I do see people that have dealt with helping people with settlement, but I think that it's a totally different lens when you've come here from another country, when you're talking about inclusion, newcomer settlement, totally different than even if you moved here from Toronto, for example, right, which is totally different than being in Toronto, right? So that's one suggestion that I would make, is, you know, even, I have helped with settlement for over 20 years, and I don't think that I would be the person to be there, because I wouldn't have that lens, I didn't move here from abroad. I also really wonder about how Envision is going to play with all of this, and how are the K P I is going to be attached to each item to actually have a direct outcome for each action that you're looking at, whether it be Envision or community development, whatever it is. But how is it actually going to be tied so that you know that the work that you're doing in that area is actually having a positive outcome? So, you know, I know that you're kind of working through all of this, but those are just my thoughts on that. And I do hope that if we're taking on a big role in health, and I don't know what level it will be, or affordable housing, I know that we've kind of dipped into that anyway, but this was always provincial, so I'm hoping the province will come through for that, because that's the only way to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hickey, over to you.
Thanks very much, Your Worship, through you to Phil and Mayor O'Hara. Thanks very much for being here. I guess I'll preface my question with saying, you know, we all represent wards, and some at large, and of course, the mayor represents, and as well as at large, represents the city as a whole. But our attitude is such that when we come to this table, we represent the entire community, and we have to make decisions based on representing the entire community. In your values statement, it talks about being regionally minded, making decisions based on positive impact on the region as a whole. I wonder, is the attitude the same that we use here, and the expectation the same that we use here for members of the regional services commission? Or, sorry, of the, yeah, of the commission? Is that the expectation, or is it bringing specific community values to a regional commission? If you understand the difference that I'm trying to allude to.
I will, I'll offer some feedback, but I will ask if Chair O'Hara will provide some commentary. I'll give you an example of where I think this lies, and I think it comes into regional-minded within the responsibilities that are given to us, that are regional and focused. And I'm going to pick on Mayor O'Hara's council. I presented recently to their council, and I left the meeting with a similar comment that I gave to this council last time I was here, which is, you don't have to do everything regional, but there are things that you could do regionally. And when you make a decision with your ward hat on, or your city of St. John hat on, think about whether it could be regional. So later on in that agenda, they were talking about taxis, and they said, is this a regional issue? And the council adopted a resolution to say, we should talk about this regionally, because I don't think we're the only ones facing this challenge. And I would say that's where I think the regional mind comes in, is that you would invite this opportunity to filter how you're thinking about an option, to say, isn't everybody dealing with this? And couldn't this be more efficient if we work as a region? And what repercussions could have if we made a decision on something today that we didn't really consult with the rest of the region on? What would that look like? And I think that mindset, again, with the responsibilities we have, will really deliver some new value to your local government, but across the entire region, and likely cost less money in the long term. Might take a little bit more time to get the built trust across the region done, but over time, I think we will succeed.
Thank you, Councilor, oh, sorry.
Thank you. And Councilor Hickey, as CEO just expressed, we all have similar challenges, and we can all deal with those challenges within our communities. And just as an example, taxis is certainly a challenge in our community. But does that mean that we're going to go regional with the taxi committee? Probably not. It doesn't make sense to have bylaws in each of the communities and then try to, you know, ask a company to go from one community to another and provide a service. There's economics involved, as was pointed out previously by Councilor Lowe. So as far as, you know, are we working as a region? Yes. This is the first time that we've had this opportunity to come together and to work as a region. Prior to this, and I think we started, I started with your former C A O and your former mayor coming together, because we were told by the province, this is what's going to happen. You're going to work regionally, this is going to be mandated throughout the province, and you're going to be legislated to do A, B, C, and D. So we worked very hard to make sure that we had working groups together, and it was the mayors that eventually fit this bill, and then it was through the R S C, Fundy Regional Service Commission, that this was designed. And I think we may have our own work to do within our communities, which we need to continue doing, and seeing that identity that each of us has. But on the other hand, there are things that we can work together with, you know, as far as the items that Phil has identified for you this evening. And, yeah, there's 77 of these points that we are hoping to look through over the next couple of years. Will we get through all of them? Probably not. Will we twin some of them together? Probably. So we are looking at working together, and for the first time, and your deputy mayor has been at the table, we've seen people come from, we aren't doing this, this is not going to be downloaded on us, because that word came out many, many a time. But, you know, over time, we've recognized that there's value to be had in working together, and not working in silos anymore, and the negativity has dissipated. So what we see now is that, yeah, I am the mayor of Quispan SIS, but I am also the chair of the Fundy Regional Service Commission, and I am going to work very hard to make sure that I do the best that I can for the entire region. And St. John is the nucleus of this region. That is recognized. And what I do recognize as well is the respect and the value and the interests that each one of you demonstrate. And I appreciate that, I appreciate the questions, and Phil and I will take those back to our committee, to the Fundy Regional Service Committee, and we will discuss these, to see how we can make it better, how we can answer your questions, so that there's more clarity. Because there was negativity from all of us, from every region, but as I say, that is beginning to, you know, dissipate. And as we work harder together, we're going to become stronger, and it's going to become a community that people are going to want to gravitate to. Just look down the street and look what you're doing here in St. John. You know, as Mayor Riordan knows, I'm a huge promoter of St. John, and the city has so much value and so much culture and so much character, that I think that the pride that you have and the questions that you ask is because you care about your city. And I care about my community, and I care about my region as well. So that's where we're coming from with this.
Thank you.
I hope that answered your question.
All right, that's great. I've got one more question from Councilor Sullivan.
Thank you, Your Worship, Mayor O'Hara, and Phil, thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you for taking on the challenge, and I'll throw Deputy Mayor McKenzie on that list as well, because when you started doing what you're doing, I think I would have quit and gone back to private life before I would have taken on that challenge. So bless you all for doing that. I think some of these things are really smart, you know, share the road campaign, trains, there are things all of us agree on across the region, nobody's going to fight about it. You didn't put rinks at the top of your list, right? Get those small wins. But it makes so much sense. You know, why are seven communities developing something that one community could do and share? Like, that is immediate savings and benefit across the board, and more so than that, it helps build that team. If there's one weakness that I might make suggestion on, it's not what's in the report. I appreciate the road show you've put on. Next time, may I suggest you bring us all together in a big room, so that we're not sitting with our council defending St. John, and Quispan SIS isn't defending Quispan SIS. If we want to talk as a region, you folks are doing it, you are doing it at the table. I don't have the time to be there every month and every two weeks, but I would love to be there every once in a while with everybody. Let's put the team together. Much easier to work together, much harder to say unkind words if you're sitting around the table with everybody, right? And I think what you've got in front of us tonight, I endorse it, I think it's smart, it's got the small things, it challenges you on some things, which I think we need to do, but if we want to keep the momentum rolling, let's bring the team together and build.
Through you, Your Worship, thank you for that, Councilor Sullivan, because I think there is value in having all of us together, and I think we did that probably back in 2012, I think. We did bring all of the council together, and it was about rinks, and we really weren't successful at that one. But I think now, because we've broadened the scope, we're more open-minded, we're more ready at this point to delve into developing this region. And I think, you know, with what I've seen tonight, and with how hard you people worked this evening on your public presentation, I know that the, you know, the passion is there for the city, and that you want to do things right, and we want to do things right. And certainly with our CEO, you know, Phil has worked diligently to work with all of the mayors and with Deputy Mayor McKenzie, and with the ideas that we've generated in order to bring this region forward. And I think we're going to open some eyes, and I think we're going to be noted around the province with what we bring to the table when it comes time for the CEO and myself and other chair members to meet with the Minister of Local Government. I think we're going to be the head turners.
Sounds good. Councilor Norton?
Thank you, Your Worship, through you to Madam Chair and the CEO. I guess, thank you for coming. I can't help while you're going through your presentation of storming, forming, or storming, norming, forming, and then performing, is that right, Councilor Sullivan? I think I, close, yeah? Anyways, I hear a lot of that, and I think one of your action items is being carried out right now, and it's build it and implement an awareness and education campaign to inform stakeholders. So I can see some of that work being done right now, as you're, I guess, you're, we've gone through the storming phase, as you've already mentioned. There you go, there you go, and we're starting to, I guess, we're starting to form some of those committees and some of those agencies and some of that collective efficacy, if you will, and it's good to see what you're doing. I can't help but think, I think it was going back quite a few years ago now, I remember one of the first commentaries that came out about our regional services commissions was, the purpose was to strengthen local government. And I can see the benefit of that now, and I, though, I took a look at some of the action items, and one of the action items is around some of the work that agencies like Prude does. And we've talked about that around this horseshoe, about how do we get some of those agencies like Prude, or you get the newcomers resource welcome center? You have all these little ecosystems that are all doing very much similar work, but yet, if you were to put them together and you had one quarterback, and that's not to diminish the respective roles that they each do, and the leaders within those respective organizations, I can see you guys being able to pull them together and push from behind so that we're not duplicating, and we're removing some of those redundancies that have frustrated this council, and I'm sure, you know, her worship's council as well in the Valley. So I guess it's a bit of a commentary to say, thanks for coming in, you've already started, you're already starting to form some of those important pieces, and we look forward to the good work that you do, but supportive of yours. Thank you.
Through you, Your Worship, thank you very much, Councilor Norton. It certainly is refreshing to hear these comments, because, you know, we never know how people are going to react, but as I said, having witnessed what you did tonight, and listening to your questions, and listening to the passion that you have for the city, I can feel it is palpable that, you know, we're all on the same page, we all want the same thing. So thank you to all of you, and thank you, Mayor Riordan, for having us here this evening, and certainly, we're going to continue working. Deputy McKenzie and our team at the Fundy Regional Service Commission will continue working and going through our draft, going through our questions, adding to it, and, you know, certainly fine tuning it and streamlining it. So thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thanks. Thank you to you, both of you as well. Now, Mayor O'Hara, you're originally a North Ender, did you not tell me that?
I am a proud North Ender.
Okay, well, there you go. This job will get done, for sure.
I started down on McLaren Boulevard, went to Paradise Row, where my house no longer exists. We went from flat to flat to flat, wherever my parents could find something that would accommodate seven children, and the salary of my dad and my mom, who was a stay-at-home mom. Then we went up to Old Adelaide Road, and that house has been torn down as well. So I'm a proud North Ender and a great St. Johner.
Thanks for being here tonight, really appreciate it. Phil, thanks to you as well. Great presentation. I'm going to take a motion to receive for information, Councilor Sullivan and Councilor Norton, on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Your Worship, I would recommend we get a motion to go beyond 10 o'clock.
I'll need a motion to go beyond 10 o'clock, Councilor Stewart and Councilor Lowe. On the question, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. I see you're opposed, Councilor Sullivan.
And Your Worship, did you want to move to item 13.1?
I want to go to my number 13.1, if possible.
Okay, and that's the Growth Committee's City Market Strategic Plan.
Now about halfway through the agenda, but come forward, please. I'm going to pass this over to Councilor Killen first, and she's going to introduce it for us. Counselor, over to you.
Yep, thank you, Your Worship. So, members of council, the Growth Committee is very pleased to endorse to you the new strategic plan for the St. John City Market, which is chaired by the City Market Strategic Plan Steering Committee. This project is the culmination of a tremendous amount of work done by the Steering Committee, consultants, and our staff. It incorporates widespread feedback from the public, city market vendors, local businesses, tourists, and numerous other stakeholders. This new plan will guide the general direction of the city market. This new plan will guide the general direction of the city market for the next ten years. Uh, I'm pleased to invite the mayor, who's actually Chair of the Steering Committee, to offer a few words on your behalf, and then I think we're gonna hear from the presenters.
Uh, thank you so much, Chairman, uh, Killen. It's ten o'clock. Uh, just wanna say, listen, this is a fantastic project. I've said this before, I moved onto the peninsula in 1985, and I haven't really seen really any big changes like this to the city market. It's time, it's exciting, we listen to the public, we got lots of engagement. Uh, I was surprised, and not surprised, by some of the feedback. Um, I thought there would be a little more, I guess, on, on maybe the food, but I think that this, it's there, but, uh, the most impressive thing, I guess, was that we want it to be a gathering space, and we want to enjoy, you know, people there and our citizens there. So, we want that gathering space that came up as be, uh, quite strongly. So, Kieran, I guess I'll pass it over to you. Are you, or is it David Dobelstein? All right, over to you first.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I won't keep you too long, you know, we know you have homes, children, and beds to get to. Uh, I also wanna point out Nancy Disney, who's here from Uptown St. John, a member of the Steering Committee. And again, special thanks to the Steering Committee for everything they did in getting this plan to where you, what you have tonight. So, just as context, again, we, this has been a process that's been a little over a year and a half, mediated through Growth Committee. The Steering Committee's done a tremendous amount of work, and we worked very closely with our consulting team to present a plan to you, which we feel achieves what our tenants and the public and local businesses, uh, and you as council and staff are all looking for in a plan. As a little bit of something for everybody. And again, it's something that will deliver over ten years, and it's, it's, it's general direction, is what I would say. But it's not so specific that we can't be flexible. So, for instance, you'll see in the plan, there's a whole bunch of implications on potential for costs. It doesn't mean today you're committing any dollars to any specific thing. We're gonna take the time we need over these ten years to say, okay, so, we've talked about moving from three aisles to two aisles. What does that mean? What are the implications? What's that gonna cost? And we'll do due diligence on every single action when they come up. But we already got a roadmap out of the gates to get started, and, uh, to tell you very quickly about that, I'm very pleased to introduce Kieran Hunt to you, who's our consultant from FPM, uh, based out of a very wet Halifax, and he's here tonight.
Kieran, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience this evening.
I love the presentation is... I will walk quickly through this. I know the evening's on, and I, it should be in your packages, so again, I appreciate the opportunity. It's been a fantastic eighteen months to get to where we are now, and, and as David had said, um, so grateful to the Steering Committee, whom we met with nine times over the period of the, this last, uh, year and a half, and, and thank you, Nancy, for sticking around. Again, we're, uh, I'll walk you through some of the slides I might gloss over, hopefully you've seen and read through the strategic plan. But again, the strategic plan is a starting point, and there's, there's some milestones coming up in your future. And, and as I was driving into town, uh, earlier this evening with my wife, who's waiting with my food hotel, um, I saw the signpost that said, "Moving, always moving forward", and I thought, okay, that's interesting, always moving forward. But this, the unique part about this project, it's using heritage and history to help propel us forward. So, we're not discounting the value of that, we're actually harnessing the history to move forward. And, and really, with that in mind, heritage and history, something that came out from the engagement that we had throughout this process, and especially after the last round of engagement for the, through the Shape Your City, was making sure we stress the preservation and integration of historic and heritage in, moving forward in this project. Again, a hundred, a hundred and fiftieth, uh, anniversary coming up soon, and lots of opportunities surrounding that. Our engagement in developing this plan was, was robust, to say the least, um, from meeting with a wide range of groups. So, not only the Steering Committee, who have representatives from vendors to broad, people with historic knowledge of the, of the community, um, local businesses and, and, and just general public, but also meeting with the vendors themselves. Through this, we had some really good, good meetings with vendors to present and get ideas from their perspective, since they're the ones living and breathing this every day. We also met with students from the high schools when they came through open pop-ups. So, we've really covered, and newcomers as well. We've, we've met with a lot of these, these groups throughout this process, and, you know, the most recent survey that we had in, um, in June, we got a staggering number of, of three hundred and seventy-two respondents. And we took all of that, and there were some criticisms, and there's some people that, that certainly are hesitant to change, as we'll show you in, in a minute. But really, what we've tried to do is take those key points that people are talking about, the, making sure that we're not turning it into a shopping mall, or it's not a food court. It's embracing the character that really defines this, this space inside and out. The, the, what we really heard were these key pillars, um, that, that helped to inform our vision and the strategic plan, and that's, you know, that his, history and storytelling is front and center. They're connected in the same, and there are so many layers to the market that we've discovered over time, and some of them that we've discovered even physically are hidden, whether it's a massive gorgeous weigh scale that's being used as a display for, for Darren's, uh, greengrocer. There's pieces there that, that can be moved or, or showcased elsewhere, little pieces like that. Part of the marketing and branding and creating, um, a unique identity for the city market as you look to move forward. Again, a lot of the, as we progress as a society, we look at the inclusion and accessibility. That's a big factor as to why we made the, the distinction between the three aisles to two aisles, as part of that mobile, internal mobility and accessibility. And other things that we, we were certainly cognizant of is the vendor mix and identifying opportunities, financial, financial sustainability for moving forward. Also, elements, as we'll talk about, of those, the governance model, but the, you know, the outdoor spaces and connections and the importance that this, that this building and this space and place has to the, to not only the local community, but the region and even nationally. I'm heading to Boston with my wife, uh, on Wednesday. I'll go to Faneuil Hall, and that's why people come here, they wanna see the city market as well. It's, even in our office, it's a known entity. From the survey that we, we did, we were very pleased with the results, and just generally speaking, we had about eight over eighty, around eighty-five percent supportive of the directions, both for the vision and the strategic plan itself. And again, when you, when we go through this process after eighteen months, and you, you get to a point where you, you have large support from the, from the broad audience, we were very pleased with that. The, the challenges that people presented to us, we're talking about, okay, well, what is the role of the market itself? We, you know, we, we tried to articulate that more in, as we updated the findings. Sensitivity to the vendors, again, wanting that mix and diversity that's important. And I should give a, a really big shout out to my colleagues at Key North Urban Development. They own and operate the, um, Law &amp; Sale Key and a number of the successful markets, the shipyards in North Vancouver. So, they've provided a lot of valuable input to us, including a, an, an operational audit. So, they're, they're really involved in, in helping us to see through those things. And I've had the opportunity to work with them for years on, on other projects. So, again, it's great to have that level of expertise on this project. This wave chart, if you will, and I'm not asking you to read the fine print there, it's really just, when we synthesize the survey results that we had, there's that spectrum of people that might say, well, change everything. It's not very many. And there's someone that says, don't change a thing. But you can see where the wave is. The wave is sort of towards the make some changes. So, we're, we're encouraged by that, and we feel that, that that's something to harness, um, as we, as we look through our actions. Initially, when we first started this, we, we were dealing with a, a vision and mission statement that was two pages long and just nothing but text and paragraphs, and none of the vendors ever read that. So, our, our initial objective was to develop a, a vision and a mission with core values that, that the community and the vendors can all buy into, and, and they have. We've, we've gone back and forth, we've tweaked words, we've tweaked the, the alignment and the, you know, sort of call it the priority, but how, how people are viewing these, these actions. And when we finally presented, you know, we found that there were these consistent challenges and opportunities that, that came out through this project, and whether that's the hours of operation, which was always indicated as a struggle. But we've developed ways to try and work and identify those core hours. The staffing, uh, moving forward, again, being responsive to the vendor needs, it's, to rely on one person is a challenge. The governance model, we've looked at as well, um, and that's gonna be an ongoing process. It's not defined in this yet, uh, there's a, a subcommittee that's, that's going to be looking at that. The heritage preservation is a, a distinct part as well, again, recognizing that, that importance. Financial sustainability, we want this project to have a life of its own and, and be successful for the vendors, for the city, and, and for the community. We, we have looked at the ideas of vendor relocations, moving things around to try and sort of maximize the revenue, maximize the, the eyes on the businesses, and that's part of the rationale for the two to three, uh, three aisles to, to two aisles, and, and creating that indoor seating space. People like to see and be seen, they wanna see what other people are eating, and it helps businesses, so we're trying to emphasize that, but also realizing that that outdoor space has a role too, and whether that's reconfiguring or re, looking at the, the solarium as, as a new entity. Not taking it down, but finding new structural capacities and, and investigating things that can help to bring that side of the building to life. Again, part of that heritage there. So, those strategic plan directions here are essentially, one, make that market, but again, that story place, that storytelling and, and nostalgia that people really harness, um, and gravitate to, um, while bringing in some of these components that can achieve destination excellence. The inclusion and making a positive community impact, there's so many segments, we've heard about it today, there's, there's the seniors, there's, there's newcomers, there's lots of opportunities, there's the youth, there's so many segments. So, we want this space to be welcoming to all, and, and this space where they can shop and explore and get that experiential, uh, moment. The indoors and outdoors is a huge part of it, and it's not just the inside space, there's the outside space, there's connection to parks around, there's connection to buildings around and other spaces. So, again, it's, it's such a pivotal place, uh, for the, for the community. And, and as we look towards ongoing sustainability efforts, again, the, the efficiencies and some of those newer things that come into play, the, the sustainability, the green, green components, recycling, you know, the new, new things that are, that, that may not have been considered in the past that we're looking at. Um, and, and again, through a new governance and leasing program as well, looking at ideas there to, to help simplify what can be a very complicated and frustrating process for some. Within each of those, we had a lot of priority actions, I won't go into each of these, but under all those strategic plans, we identified these priority actions that, that could be sort of that low-hanging fruit or key things, whether it's the bathrooms and, and making those, improving those as a safer, more welcoming space. And then we did look at the layout configuration, obviously, the three to two aisles. Over time, historically, everybody that we spoke to said they loved, they loved the three aisles because it's part of the history. But did they know that historically the three aisles had kiosks or vendors that went to the columns? And over time, they have crept out two and a half, three feet into the space. So, there's, those side aisles aren't as functional as they are for modern standards. But looking at the, the idea of the benches, benches, the sensitivity to the benches, we're not, we're saying redefine what those benches can look like, but repurpose them in the outdoor space. So, you're bringing, you're not getting rid of it, you're not getting rid of that historic piece, you might be read, adaptively reusing them elsewhere on the property. And then using your local, your local community to come up with a design that might work for new kiosks in the, in the center. So, again, having people that have a connection with the community help to design what, what the future can look like. And, and looking, there's not much, you know, we, we did hear comments that we're losing some leasable space, we've worked on the plan a little bit, tweaked it, and this is an approximate, we're not really losing a lot, because we're introducing other areas for revenue generation that could really, uh, create some, something new and exciting. Um, if you think of, uh, the mezzanine that we've got at the, at the Jermaine Street end, again, that could be a sponsored space, it could be used by Uncorked, it could be rented out for weddings, there's a lot of opportunities for supplemental additional revenue streams. So, again, I think at that point, um, just wanna thank you, thank you for the opportunity to share this, it's been a fascinating and exciting project for us to be involved with. But I'd open up any questions that we might have from members of the council.
Uh, anyone have any questions for Kieran? Counselor Redwan has a question or a comment. Kieran, for you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I mean, this, there's so much information here, it was great reading it over. Lots of things kind of brought to fruition, you know, you know, seventy percent of people when they go shopping, it's not during hours of operation that we currently have, those, those sort of things that, um, but it's such a communal space that people go to and enjoy each other, so this has been so important to, for me to see the strategic plan. My question to you is, it looks like a SWOT analysis is incomplete. Is there a reason for that?
With the...
There was, I mean, at least not in my packet, like, there was no T in the SWOT analysis. So, you know, looking at the threats and trying to figure out how to mitigate the threats is an extremely important part of a strategic plan, as I'm sure you know. But, I mean, you know, I think about like, things like vacant buildings beside the city market, parking, things like that, and so there's some things that are always more in your control than others, but there was nothing actually addressed. Is there a piece that's missing out of the packet, or, I mean, I saw that some things were kind of mentioned a little bit throughout as like weaknesses, but an actual threat is a little bit different. Just wonder if you could speak to that at all.
Yeah, I don't think we looked at the threats in the same way, we looked at threats and weaknesses kind of in the same, in the same vein. Um, I think threats, like, e, economic threats, we've seen the pandemic, we didn't wanna dwell on, on that as a threat. Again, I think we've, we, that's been, um, spoken, um, and, and the way that economics are with, with various cycles of recession. So, there are certainly some threats. Um, I think as, as the city grows itself, you know, if we look at threats, um, that might be whether, you know, if it's homeless, homeless populations or others, you know, there's threats that are, that are, in essence, the weakness, the weaknesses, um, that you have to be cognizant of, but trying to create the environment itself to, to help mitigate those, while being inclusive at the same time. And we've talked to the vendors about providing opportunities to, um, have, have food distribution or being a hub for food, local food distribution for those in need, and even embracing, um, those less privileged, um, within it. So, we didn't specifically, um, call out the threats in that way.
Yeah, and I think it's a really important part of a strat analysis, um, and I'll just tell you, some things, it's a little bit more in your control than others, like Market Square and Brunswick Square, if, if there's a high vacancy rate, it's not really within our control, but we could market the city market as this unique space, it's almost like a stands-alone kind of thing. So, there's some things that you can do, and that's how you kind of offset the negativity of it, but you, I think it's really important to consider, so I feel like it's incomplete. So, that's kind of where I just sit with that. But there's so many good things in it, and I think the aisles, the way that you have all that sort of laid out, I think it's great, and keeping, um, you know, in with the heritage obviously is extremely important. So, a lot of it, I'm, I'm feeling great about, there's just that piece that I think is essential that's just not there. So, anyway, that's just my feedback, but I just thought I'd ask.
Appreciate that, thank you very much.
No problem. Thank, thank you, Counselor. I think for us, from the strategic planning team, it was a lot of blue sky, and like, we really wanted to see what was it that we wanted the market to be. We always, as you mentioned, we already knew what the threats were, we see that now because we know that we don't have the revenue in there, we don't have the, the, uh, components in there that we need to have. So, we just really wanted to bring, like, what is, what's the optimum for us, you know, and then how do we, how do we get there? And you'll see in the recommendation, at the end of the recommendation, that we've also baked in that they will come back with a, the resourcing plan to comment council, so that's genius, in my opinion. So, Counselor Vicki, over to you.
Uh, thanks very much, Your Worship. Thanks for the presentation. I am a huge fan of the two-aisle strategy. Our current strategy doesn't make much sense, we welcome you to this incredible building, you buy whatever you're going to eat, and then we've got a lovely metal chair waiting for you, um, outside. So, I, I, I think it's a really great strategy, it makes, uh, it makes the market a lot stickier, you're gonna see that big number of the forty percent of people that just walk through the city market instead of actually stopping, I think you're gonna see that change. And, and I guess, for me, in, as, uh, use of the market, it's, it's, I use it a, a lot for the first two categories that are featured in the online survey results. Prepared food and produce, in particular, produce and, um, groceries. I, I use the market as very essential efforts, it's where I do my grocery shopping, and if that didn't exist, then I would have to really change my lifestyle and my buying habits as a result of that. I don't know that I necessarily see that consistently reflected in the strategic plan as that central core around food. And I'm, I'm just wondering if you can elaborate a bit on that and help me get my head around it being central to it.
Yeah. No, I think there's, there's a, a great point. One, one of the things we're looking at in terms of how you locate or, or co-locate the vendors, when you look at the meats and, and Darren and the greengrocers, is by reconfiguring, one of the elements we had is taking the green grocer and providing that an opportunity to have an outdoor presence, an outdoor entry exit that could be open after hours even. So again, by, by not having them takes too much all the center space, which is hard to cordon off, if they have a space that might be linear against the wall with HNS, those HNS meats, there might be an opportunity for them to be open after hours as well as, and catering more to the grocery needs of, of the community. Because there isn't a grocer in, in the city, in the uptown area. So I think that's definitely one of the areas we've looked at. The importance of that as an anchor and, and we do identify that the anchor historically, as well as moving forward, should continue to be those, those foods, not the, not necessarily prepared meals, but the produce, the fresh perishables, the seafood, the meats. You know, there's the core pillars of what, what markets, public markets are. It's not, you know, I think you get the international flair of foods is evolving, but I think the staples of your produce, your meats, your, your fish and, and even bakery, which I know has been a work in progress, is part of that, that important piece moving forward. And I think it's something that we, we want to try to harness in there. We've looked at a few iterations even over time as to how, how can we best even move them around to, so they capture that, that visibility component as well. So they're, they're integral to the, to the overall future of the market.
Counselor Ogden, down to you.
Thank you. Great presentation. And the two aisle thing, I, I was just at Nathaniel Hall and Quincy Market and they work well together. And one has that historic component where you can go up and see the, where the revolution started because it started in Boston. I often think the association with the Loyalty House and our city market are the same time, but they were, they were enemies. But one thing I found with the city market, since we've gone with the brick in the last thirty-five years, is that the brick becomes dangerous. And, and the problem hasn't been solved because you go uptown now and I find it embarrassing to see the number of weeds in the bricks, Charlotte Street, Prince William Street. If you had stamped concrete, you would not have that situation at all. Compared to the streets of Boston, our streets are very, very dirty. And that stands out. And I think part of it's the brick because we had five or six businesses uptown and I don't remember it being that bad, but the brick, we bought into it because of the buildings, but I don't think it's the answer to the cleanliness. It is actually a safety issue. So I think that if we go to Charlotte Street and, because sometimes what's happened to the market, we had one business right next door, is it's become in isolation because so many closures. Our buildings are all office with some apartments now. And so I think Uptown St. John has made a mistake in the last few years not going after university students. I mean, Boston has recovered its economy by building medical facilities, like we're trying to do at Tucker Park, but they also have tens of thousands of students who'd love to live downtown. And I think Uptown St. John has stood back on that and not taken advantage where the number of university students is increasing greatly because we have the lowest. But we don't need to build thirty, forty million dollar buildings at Tucker Park. But we do for a medical facility, which, but I think Uptown St. John has not been aggressive enough because we're sitting there with Brunswick Square and Market Square empty. And then I just found out this weekend that.
Counselor, can I interrupt you there? This is like the market strategic plan, right? If you wanted to talk to Nancy Tissington, the CEO of Uptown St. John, or your counselor right next door.
Just trying to make some suggestions, Mayor.
Yeah, okay, I mean.
I won't make them anymore. Thank you very much. Your time.
I appreciate that. I think just quickly, I'll just have one, one comment there. I remember Simon Fraser University in downtown Vancouver was the Harbor Center Shopping Center, which was becoming largely vacant. The university, Simon Fraser University took four, four floors of the, of a vacant shopping program.
Okay.
You know, this is, this is part of the evolution of the city, growing, growing pains.
It is. All right, so I'm going to take, I think that's it for questions. Can I get a motion for receive, for information or is he involved? Wait a minute.
There's a written motion.
There's a written motion. Hold on, never mind. It's too late, it's past my time. I need a mover and I'm taking Counselor Killen because she's the chair. And Counselor Hickey, since he's the, to begin implementation of the plan. And this is my favorite part, bring a resourcing plan to common council on an annual basis for the duration of the strategic plan for their consideration as part of the big, the annual budget deliberations. Got a mover and a seconder on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Kieran, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you very much.
Always a pleasure.
Likewise. Thank you very much.
Okay, City Clerk, where to next?
Well, we haven't done members' comments.
Oh, well, let's do that. Come on.
It's up to the council if it wants.
Yeah, we're going to do tens.
Okay, so next, we have not done our third readings.
Hold on, I gotta find that in my.
Now we'll start with item ten point one. And ten point one is for zoning bylaw amendment with the section fifty-nine condition at four sixty Milford Road.
Ten point one, okay. A zoning bylaw, yikes. I'm going to just pass that right over to you for the motions.
Okay. Normally the commissioner, no, okay. Thank you. So for this particular item, there are six motions. First motion is to approve reading by entirety.
Counselor Low, Counselor Sullivan, on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John. The zoning bylaw of the city of St. John enacted on the fifteenth day of December twenty-fourteen is amended by amending Schedule A, the zoning map of the city of St. John by rezoning a parcel of land having an area of approximately one point seven six hectares located at four sixty Milford Road, also identified as PID number zero zero four zero five three eight one, from two unit residential to mid-rise residential pursuant to a resolution adopted by common council under section fifty-nine of the Community Planning Act. Now we need a motion to approve the section fifty-nine condition.
Section fifty-nine, Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Hickey on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
And now a motion to approve, third reading by title.
Counselor Low and Counselor Sullivan on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John. And now we require a motion, assent to one or more subdivision agreement.
Assent to one or more subdivision agreements, Counselor, or the deputy and Counselor Sullivan on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Next would be assent to money in lieu of land for public purposes.
Assent to money in lieu of land, whatever, Counselor Low and Counselor Sullivan on the question? All in favor? It's past my bedtime. I don't want to have a laughing fit now. All in, motion carried. Next.
And to authorize an agreement to construct a road over PID five five two two one four two eight.
Construction of a road. Counselor Sullivan and the deputy on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, and next, next item, Your Worship, is ten point two. And that's for zoning bylaw amendment with section fifty-nine conditions for ten Crane Mountain Road.
Ten Crane Mountain, I'll pass it to you for the motions, please.
Okay, so three motions in this one. First one is to approve the reading in entirety.
Reading in entirety, Counselor Low, Counselor Sullivan on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John. The zoning bylaw of the city of St. John enacted on the fifteenth day of December twenty-fourteen is amended by amending Schedule A, the zoning map of the city of St. John by rezoning a parcel of land having an area of approximately eleven point three hectares located at ten Crane Mountain Road, also identified as a portion of PIDs zero zero two eight nine five eight seven and five five zero four three two seven seven, from rural to pit and quarry pursuant to a resolution adopted by common council under section fifty-nine of the Community Planning Act. Next motion would be approval of section fifty-nine conditions.
Approval of section fifty-nine, Counselor Low and Counselor Sullivan on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
And final motion to approve third reading by title.
Approve third reading by title, Counselor Harrison, Counselor Hickey on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
And that's a law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Next item, City Clerk.
Next is ten three, a zoning bylaw amendment at twenty-one Cannon Street and three forty-eight Rockland Road.
I'll pass it to you for the motions.
Okay, and three motions required here, approve the reading in its entirety.
Reading in its entirety, Counselor Harris and the deputy on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John. The zoning bylaw of the city of St. John enacted on the fifteenth day of December twenty-fourteen is amended by rezoning a parcel of land having, having an area of approximately two thousand eight hundred forty-seven point two six square meters located at twenty-one Cannon Street and three forty-eight Rockland Road, also identified as PID numbers zero 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 two five seven nine one and five five zero eight six one two eight, from general commercial to mid-rise residential.
Next motion.
And approve, or sorry, repeal previous section fifty-nine conditions.
Repeal previous section fifty-nines, Counselor Hickey and Counselor Redwan on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
And now a motion to approve third reading by title.
Approve third reading by title, Counselor Low, Counselor Hickey on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Next item, City Clerk.
Now we have some items under general correspondence. The first one's a letter from Kay Harris, item fifteen one on your agenda regarding skate park challenges. There's a recommendation to refer this to the CAO for follow-up.
Refer to CAO. Counselor Hickey and the deputy on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Next is fifteen two. It's a St. John King's Adult Learning, Inc., Adult Academic and Digital Literacy Skills Program Delivery. And there's a recommendation to refer to the chief administrative officer for follow-up.
Refer to CAO for follow-up on this one. Counselor Redwan and Counselor, and the deputy on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
The next letter is fifteen three. It's from A. Pottle regarding possible extension and overdue maintenance of Shoreline Trail. And it's a recommendation to refer to the CAO for follow-up.
Counselor Norton and Counselor Stewart on the question? Yep, over to you, Counselor Hickey.
Thank you. I just wonder if we could be included in response on that? I'm just curious as to what the, what the answer from, from our team is on that one, friend, if possible.
Yes, right now it's really to understand what the requests are of the, of the person who's written in and staff will go out and follow up onsite, understand what the needs are. If it's simple, we'll take care of it. If it's more complex, we'll report back through council.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next item is seventeen one on the agenda. It was an item that came from committee of the whole closed session and this is with respect to Extended Producer Responsibility Program Recycling Collection Service Provider. And there's a draft motion to resolve that common council decline they offer from circular, circular materials for the city to be collection contractor as per the proposed agreement documents attached to MNC twenty twenty-three dash one eighty-five.
Counselor Hickey and the deputy on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
And the final one is seventeen point two. It's a CMHC agreement. The resolution is resolved that the city of St. John enter into a rapid housing initiative agreement with Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation, generally in the form as presented to committee of the whole at its June, July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three meeting and further, subject to the city receiving consent from CMHC for the registering of the necessary mortgages against the project lands and subject to the terms of the provincial funding for, for project matching those CMHC funding, including the forty-year affordability period for the project, that the city of St. John enter into a contribution agreement with Kaleidoscope Social Media for a project located at six seven Broadview Street, St. John. New Brunswick, generally as a form presented to committee of the whole at its July twenty-fourth meeting and further, that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the set agreements and any document, any documents and ciliary thereto, including the city's mortgage to be registered against the project lands.
Take a mover, Counselor Killen, Counselor Harris on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Counselor Low, over to you for the motion to adjourn.
I need to adjourn.
Good. Lead a seconder. Counselor Norton, thank you. We're going back into clothes, don't run away, folks. [laughing]. Yep, first.
Keep her short, she's getting to that game.